Welcome, Slada Komatia Matel. I called a special meeting to order on February 25th, 2025. Before we proceed, would like to read our line acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognized that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Lishan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney Tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commit to sustaining ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. City Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Mickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Here. All right. Moving along to our only item on the agenda, our work session. We'll be going into strategic planning work session at this time. I believe it's time for public comment. Do we have any? We don't have anyone in person. Do we have any folks online? All right. Seeing we have nobody online, I will bring it to city staff.
All right. Mayor and myself will do a welcome. And we're echoing a little. Are you able to hear us okay? Okay. Well, welcome. You're all here. So we've accomplished step one. Thank you for taking the time out of your day for another strategic plan work session. You'll remember that two years ago, we did this very same thing in this very same room with our facilitator Sean Spano. What that produced was a quite thoughtfully prepared strategic plan that guided and prioritized our work in addition to core services over the last two-ish years. I say that because it is an April 2023 to March 2025 timeline, which I should note was very helpful, giving that extra time for the council to be onboarded again in the two-year term. Looking forward to a productive conversation and a review of the accomplishments we've had over the two years and looking forward to another strategic plan development.
Hello, everybody. Sean Spano. It's nice to see you again and Vice Mayor McQuaid. Nice to meet you for the first time. So I get to be your facilitator today and you do have the annotated agenda here. And that'll be our primary document that will work from just in terms of the format and overview. Want to just set us up for how we'll be spending the next couple hours together. So in just a minute, I'm going to ask you to just check in on your city mission. It's in the strategic plan. You have the hard copy of your strategic plan that Ann just mentioned. It's also on the annotated agenda. Just do a quick check-in, see if that mission statement still resonates with you and is still relevant for Albany. At that point then, I'll have a couple framing comments around your strategic plan, how it's organized, and we'll talk a little bit of, just very briefly about the iceberg model of city work and that'll set us up to get into the strategic plan. And I'll turn it over to staff to do an update on progress that was made over the past year. So there's the update document. It was in part of the packet. You don't have a hard copy, but we'll show it on the screen. And we won't spend a whole lot of time on that, but do want to get your feedback on what happened last year, what was successful, what was less than successful, what accounted for that. And then as you're going through that exercise, I'll encourage you to be thinking, where do you want to go in 2025 for the rest of this year and into next year, into 2026? Are these still the right goals? You've got six strategic goals. You've got objectives under each one of the goals and you'll get an update on those objectives. Are those still the right objectives? Do they need the change? Do they maybe drop off, add a new one in, tweak the existing one? So that'll be the heart of our conversation and what staff is looking for, of course, is direction. Are these the strategic goals? Are these the objectives? And what would you like staff to accomplish under each one of those objectives? So that'll take us through our two hours together. I just want to just emphasize in terms of format today, you know, we're off-site, we're not in council chambers. It's more informal here, participatory, interactive. There's no approval. There's no need to have a formal motion today. Ideally, what would happen is you all would come to some agreement about the goals and objectives for the next two years. Staff would have a clear sense of direction. And then your city manager and assistant city manager will take this back to the executive team, to the department heads, refine whatever needs to be refined and then bring it back to you as for formal adoption at a public, at a public meeting, at a council meeting. So how's that sound for everyone in terms of our time together today? I'm getting a thumbs up from the mayor. Excellent. Here in your, in your packet, on the very first page, I believe, yes, is the mission statement. So we'll just do a quick check-in on the mission statement. Albany is committed to providing a healthy, safe and accessible city and strives to lift every voice in our community. That's a great mission statement, I have to say. It's really nicely done, right? It's a one sentence. It's crisp. It's to the point. Reactions to that? Thoughts? Does it need any changing? Is there anything missing in that mission statement? Not that there needs to be, just a check-in. Any thoughts about that? Jump in, Vice Mayor.
I like the first part. I'm not strives to lift every voice in our community. I'm not really sure what that means.
Okay.
If everybody's fine with it, I am thrilled to have it. But I could have more thoughtful discussion about, does that say what we want? I don't know that we need to do that today.
Well, we, yeah, we can, let's talk about it a little bit. We've got, we have a few minutes to talk about it. And if it's the sense of the council that to make some changes, that's totally fine and we don't need to wordsmith it. That's, for me, wordsmithing in a group is brain damage. But if we get enough sense about what the changes that you want, we can massage that and we can put some language together and staff can do that and bring it back to you for formal adoption. But so what does that mean? Lift every voice in the community. How do you interpret that?
I interpret it that we listen to all of the people in our community, not just a certain group or a specific
Okay.
individual, but that we listen to all the people who are involved.
So maybe every voice is really important there, right? It's not just the vocal people, but it's everybody, all community members in Albany. Any other thoughts about that? Go ahead.
Yeah. I like the formulation you just had. I think it's more plain English, more accessible.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I've worked with other councils and some, they want to emphasize that we serve this whole city, to your point, all community members, and this is especially true in cities that go to have gone to districts. And so they really want to emphasize, we don't want to manage and govern by district. We want to manage by citywide and so we want to make sure we reach all. And I don't, don't think that's exactly what's happening here, but it's somewhat similar. So other thoughts about?
Actually, I just want to add in one more thing because I realize we're using the word voice and not everybody can speak.
Right.
So probably need to wordsmith something like, just like, we don't really try to use the word walkable or something, you know?
Right.
I want to be cognizant of that.
Yeah.
So maybe perspective? Listen to every perspective.
Yeah. And when I hear the word voice, it is, right, there's the vocal piece of that, but it's also sort of symbolic around identity and a personhood and the self and lift that person up. But that's not what it says, right? It says lift every voice. Other thoughts?
Yeah. Thank you, Vice Mayor McQuaid, for opening this up with some of your initial thoughts. I do have a couple things underlined and marked. I think given our current situation in society and what many folks are enduring right now in terms of feeling like their, their life is under subscription or under harm at this time, I think it is important to emphasize that people do have different experiences and do have different identities. And I thank you, Councilmember Hanson Romero, for touching on that one word, voice. I think there's an opportunity to perhaps wordsmith it around identity and experience. I also kind of take issue with the phrasing strive to lift, just because I feel like we as a city, we can commit to something a bit more stronger than that. Something, some type of phrasing that sounds or comes off as a bit more catalytic, if that makes sense. But something that's catalytic around ensuring the visibility and actions on other folks' identities, lived experiences, lived truth in our community. That's a long way of saying something. If there's a way to make it more concise and more, sound more beautiful, I'm all for it. But I think that the first half of the mission statement, I think, stands pretty strong for me still. We touch on some of the core things that we as a council have consistently voted on to sustain in our community around accessibility, public health and safety. And so I don't see a need at this time in making any, making significant changes, but I do, I would like to see maybe the possibility of that second half having a bit more attention.
Great. Excellent. Any other thoughts? I've got a, I've got an idea to share with you, but I want to make sure you all have an opportunity to weigh in.
I would say something like recognizes every experience and obviously better than that, but
Yeah.
getting the recognizing that we actually acknowledge or acknowledge experiences, I think might, might fit. And it is rather aspirational. So I think we want to be careful not to say we, we will because well, that, that's a, that's a goal. I guess that could be a part of the mission statement. I just, I want to be sure that we kind of recognize that we can't always meet everyone's.
Right. And, and just as a, take two steps back. So the mission statement describes what is the core function of the city? What is your, what is your reason for existing? And it's very, and it's very present oriented. Vice Mayor, you mentioned aspirational. That would be more like a vision, right? Where you're, it's an aspiration where we want to go in the future. The mission statement is who are we now in terms of what we do, our purpose, our function, our reason for being? So as a, just as a thought here, Albany is committed to providing a healthy, safe and accessible city and is committed or ensures superior services to all members of the community. Now that's not, or could even say something like committed to ensuring quality, superior services to all the diverse members of our community. And that, you know, encapsures the all piece and not quite, and it does capture the differences, right? In terms of our diverse community. Does something like that sound?
I wouldn't want to use the word superior.
Okay.
I don't like that word at all.
Okay. What kind of services do you provide, right? Quality services or maybe you just say services. You don't have an adjective, right? You, and, and ensures and provides services to all diverse members of our community. Something like that.
But I think the city does, does more than provide services. I think of services as being, we have the garbage picked up or we put out a fire and, and we do more than that. So I'm not sure I want to, I don't, I don't particularly think the word services is what I'm thinking of.
How about, how about the word serves and serves the diverse, all the diverse members of our community? That's a really good point because you have other kinds of programs and, and other kinds of functions that you have that don't fit under the umbrella of service. Does something like that sound like it starts hitting the mark, Mayor? Does that kind of capture your point about the demographics and the differences?
Yeah, and I'd say dancing with the operational use of certain words, definitely a strategy move here. I also not too fond of the word superior for a lot of reasons. But I think this idea of encapsulating it through the phrasing of serves all diverse backgrounds, our experiences, I think does, is just in capturing how we as a city and our city staff do strive to provide top-notch programming and services and resources to our community. How we condense, how we condense that into a short phrase, I know it's quite, quite the, the optical, but I think phrasing it as serves all gets straight to it.
I, I'm going to check with Nicole. I feel like I've got a sense about where they want to go and how this can get wordsmithed. Nicole, are you there with me?
Agreed, yeah. I think the, the serves is a great place to start and understanding it's all and, and how we frame that. We will navigate and make sure that it's tested again. So that's great feedback and I think we can shape that well.
Good. Do we feel like we, you've, you've got enough here and we're not missing anything? Good, good. Okay, excellent. So amongst other things, you'll get the draft strategic plan coming back to you for approval, which will include a draft mission statement, updated mission statement. Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Let's move on to the update. And just as a preamble to the update, let me draw your attention to the next page, page three in your strategic plan document. So this is the iceberg model of city work and this is just framing comments around strategic goals. So the iceberg model tells us that, you know, there's the iceberg and there's the water line. And what is above the water line, visible? And this is thinking, looking at it from council's perspective. What is visible is council's vision for the city's future, governing bodies, goals and priorities, goals, priorities and objectives. So as the policymaking body in the city, as the city council, your role, of course, is to provide the vision, the direction for the community and that gets translated into policies. And as the council, your, your job is to provide the strategic, identify what those strategic goals are because those strategic goals respond to what Albany needs right now. Strategic goals are not lifetime goals, right? They are at a particular point in time because this is what the city needs right now, based on your understanding, based on what you're hearing from your constituents and from the community members. And that, and that vision for the community really gets encapsulated in the strategic goals. Also under, that's more visible, is modernizing the organization, staff's initiatives for efficiency and innovation. Things like technology, process improvements and those kinds of things are above and beyond what's below the water line because what's below the water line is the routine work of the city, the everyday work of the city, the everyday service delivery. And you don't usually see that as the city council. Now you do approve the budget that goes towards resourcing those services, but you know, you're not really involved in plan checking. You're not involved in paving the streets, right? That's all staff's work to do that. It's below the water line because it's just the everyday work that happens. The relationship between the two, you have this goal, you have a goal, climate action plan goal, your number, your first goal. Let's say we come back in two years, we really feel like we've gotten this goal under our belt and we feel like we've really made a lot of accomplishments and it doesn't need to be have special attention. We are going to now move it below the water line. It just becomes part of the operations, the everyday operations of the city. So that is how that, the strategic goals move down below the water line. But they're above the water line because they need special attention now because of the circumstances that you find yourself in. So the, the other piece here is that as we're going through today and you'll probably say, wow, we've got these six goals and it covers a lot of area, but there may be a lot of other items and tasks that you want staff to accomplish. It doesn't need to go in the vision for the city. Let Nicole and let Isabel tell you, yes, we're doing that. That's in fact, community development is working on that every single day. So it's not as if it's not happening, it's just happening below the water line. It doesn't have that visibility. The last thing I'll say, just by way of setting this up, you have a very clean strategic plan in term of this, in terms of the structure. You've got your strategic goals and so you list the six strategic goals on the next page. And then underneath each one of those goals, you have objectives which are kind of sub-goals. So the strategic goal is very broad. The objectives are more specific, a little bit more action item oriented. And then that's, and then underneath that, you have your city plans. What, what city plans, specific plans, general plan, et cetera, feeds into accomplishing those objectives. So it's a very nice, clean strategic plan in terms of the structure. The one piece that's not in here, because this is really staff's purview, there are work plans underneath those objectives and that's really staff's development. Who's going to work on that objective, with what resources? What's the timeline? What are the metrics? What are we trying to achieve? How, how do we monitor and assess progress? So that's, and that's why it's so important for a council to give staff clear directions so they can go and create work plans and then that really facilitates the accomplishments of the goals and objectives. So any questions at all about your strategic plan, just the structure of it, what the strategic goals are, the objectives? If we're okay, go ahead. Councilmember?
Yes, this is a question about the iceberg model, which I do recall from last time, very helpful metaphor. Thank you. I don't recall, and maybe it was there, that modernizing the organization was above the water line. I don't know if it's the exact same illustration as two years ago. It's interesting to see it there because from, from my perspective, that's, a lot of that's below the water line. I know staff is doing a lot of that, but I don't have insight into that. And so in some ways, the metaphor for council might be different than the metaphor for staff.
It, it, that's actually a really good point and I like this model. Sometimes when I've used the model, I'll take modernizing the organization off above the water line and not because it, it doesn't belong there, but because it's really kind of staff's work to do that. And the reason why, now Bandian's the author here, puts above the water line because when they're looking at process improvements, they're not paving the streets, right? They're, police are not on a service call. This is extra above and beyond the everyday service delivery. But the interesting thing, councilmember, is that I have seen councils have modernizing the organization as a strategic goal, right? We want to have, invest in technology, we want to invest in process improvements and we want more efficiency. So it actually becomes a strategic goal in that way.
I would say as a councilmember, to the extent that staff shares or wants to share more, I'm certainly receptive to it because I know it's, as you say, it's not part of the ongoing serving city and therefore it's, it's extra. So it's helpful for me to know what staff is doing that's extra.
Sure, and thank you for the question. I paused on the same element. Surprise, surprise. And yeah, I, it's an interesting dynamic here because as city manager, I see that this is certainly under the responsibility of the city manager to have a pulse on the departments, the operational effectiveness or deficiencies and look for ways to modernize that so that our staff is equipped with the expertise and tools to perform their services as to the maximum extent they can. So with regard to how that intersects with the city council, I think at the policy direction level, wanting the city to be forward-focused, delivering core services as professionally and, and well as they can, I, I see the divvy there more in terms of the council analyzing departments or operations, I think, is where there becomes a bit of a quandary in terms of applying this model specifically.
And my experience with staff is they'd love to have more time to modernize the organization, but it's one of those things where I've got this right in front of me and there's this, you know, it's, it's needs urgent attention and that goes, falls to the wayside.
Every day.
Because it isn't like demanding that you do it. It's one of those, if I invest the time now, I'll save the time later, but what, where's the time that, right now, that I can invest? I don't have the time. So it, it languishes sometimes. Anything else about your strategic plan, just in terms of the structure, the goals, the objectives, the city plans?
I was curious, could we, is there a way to pull up like our website of where we've got kind of all of that? Or am I jumping ahead? Are we going to do that anywhere?
We will do that, sort of at the end of the update, so.
Okay.
We can, if it's helpful for your question now.
It, I mean, it would be good just to like visualize it while we're going through this, I think, possibly.
So now we'll move on to the other item of updating. And so Nicole will provide an update on what happened over the last year and we have that ambush reject that. And then that lists the strategic goals with the objectives underneath with the status of what's happened.
Yeah, because I think it's kind of, for me, I kind of feel like I need to see kind of what's been done before I can identify what needs to be done.
And, and that's, that's great because that's exactly the flow here today. And then so as you're, you know, looking at what was accomplished over the last year, you're thinking, where do I want to take this next year and for the rest of this year and into next year? Because that'll be our conversation after the, after the update. Okay, so I think we're ready to hand for the strategic plan update.
We will start with the images first as we run through the update and then complete the, the discussion item with the webpage, which we are quite proud of that webpage. So what we did here, I still feel an image is worth a thousand words. So you'll see some running slides as we talk, synthesizing both things specific to your strategic plan objectives, but also, also things that speak to the goals as a whole. So starting with advanced climate action and adaptation, goal number one. I think the council is well aware that a significant amount of work has been done in this area. And I will touch on a couple of webpages actually as part of the comments here. At your most recent meeting, you had a healthy discussion on the gas line decommissioning project and that item will be returning to you at your next meeting to discuss the funding options and next steps associated with that project. As a reminder, the federal funding for this grant project is uncertain. We do have some options in terms of how to move forward, which will be communicated at your next meeting. This was a significant amount of work to get to this stage, really a momentous project. Certainly, very few cities are taking on an initiative like this. So really something to be applauded in terms of the city staff that have been so committed to this for quite a while now. EV chargers are a strong interest among some constituents, many constituents. EV chargers are a strong interest among some constituents, many constituents. This work is underway in different ways, uh really looking at what is most turnkey. As we move forward in this major initiative, we are quite pleased in the success of the multifamily electric vehicle charging stations that have been produced through grant opportunities provided by the city in outreach to our multifamily locations. Eighteen have been installed thus far. We're working on phase two of that project to see what other opportunities we have within the neighborhoods to help facilitate EV charging stations. As part of this, the council has also heard interest in city facilities having electric vehicle charging. It's more complicated than it looks, and our buildings are a bit antiquated. So there is some feasibility analysis that needs to go into that work. I'm pleased to report that that will be a project put forward in your next capital improvement plan, which is coming to the council in the next few months. So that is something that we hear and understand and will be programming into a project. Also, Street Tree Management Plan Development is underway. You've seen that at the council level through study sessions, also through the ArcRec Open Space Commission. In feedback from that commission as recommendations up to the council. We anticipate this plan will come to the council for review and ideally approval in spring, summer of this year. A few other major accomplishments in this particular goal. There's a lot, but to summarize a few that more recent, the Sustainable Foodware Ordinance was adopted by the council recently. This is currently in the outreach and implementation phase. Also, we've had a great success with the heat pump HVAC conversions. Twenty-two households have received funding to support that program. And the recent adoption by the council of an ordinance to reduce barriers to building electrification by expanding areas where mechanical equipment can be located, again, helps facilitate electrification. And we have a webpage specific to um the climate action and adaptation work. I list that out because it is a catalog similar to the overall catalog we have for implementation of your strategic plan that speaks to the cross-departmental implementation of this program area. And it spans across several pro- uh departments, primarily public works, community development, and also city management and administration. And we have a lot of projects listed on that page that I won't necessarily speak to today. Moving on to goal two, housing.
Nicole, can we just hold just for a second? Because as I understand it, the pictures need to run through the cycle, right, Anne? And and then she can pull up the update so you can see it. Because she's verbally provided the update, but you you have not seen it. It'll be up on the screen, hopefully in just a minute. Okay, so yeah.
We can put that up instead if it'd be helpful, the the summary of the um.
It it is part of the packet.
Yeah.
Um.
Summary?
I had a question before you move on about one of the images that.
Sure.
Cycling through. It looked like maybe a review of a new website.
Yes.
Okay.
We will be getting to that.
All right, fair enough.
Supposed to be running images of the overview of accomplishments or things in the works that we're excited to share or really just synthesize um the baseline and speak to the council's strategic plan. For example, the AC Alert is reminding us of how important disaster preparedness is. One of those, yes, thank you to Jeremy, who I want to make sure gets um a world of credit, is the development of our beta test new webpage, which will be coming soon. And Isabel will speak more to that in her remarks.
So in in the packet, there is the strategic plan, but there's also the status update, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five document. And that's what Nicole is working off of right now.
Yes.
Okay.
It was part of the agenda packet.
Do you want to, you paramize it?
It was attachment one.
Anne, you can go ahead and put it up on screen, too, if you want to display um goal two. This is the item that was included in your agenda packet, which is the written summary of progress to date in implementing the strategic plan. So what we are doing in our presentation is a high-level overview, not going into every single item in respect to time and also to the work session of looking forward to your next strategic plan. So continuing on with goal two. There have been a number of ordinances recently adopted by the council speaking to this overall goal. I should note that all objectives at the city level with regard to this goal and also the last goal are underway, ongoing or completed. And unique to this particular goal, or had a little two-step due to changes in state law. Um and as you all know, state law with regard to housing is a rapidly evolving world, which we continue to navigate together. As a reminder, the council adopted updates to the accessory dwelling unit and zoning density bonus standards, both of which helping facilitate additional housing opportunities. Also, congratulations to the council for appointing all seats to the Housing Advisory Committee, who is now able to meet regularly and provide that instrumental feedback and recommendation to the council and staff on implementing our housing element. We have ongoing outreach and have for years to provide information to community members regarding affordable housing and related resources, and also continue to retain the services of Echo Housing to provide rent review and landlord tenant counseling. On average, we have about seventy participants in that program annually. And goal three. Promoting streets that support safety and transportation mobility options. Again, all objectives in this section are underway or completed. I should note that some additional guidance and consideration affirming the interest on approach to traffic calming policy would be helpful going forward. At your most recent meeting, you had a conversation about the active transportation plan status and next steps, some additional analysis that has been directed by the council with regard to the planning work for that. We anticipate a completion date by the end of twenty-twenty-five. Should underscore that there is a lot of planning work still to be done with that project and engagement. And look forward to that coming back to several advisory bodies as well as the council. Traffic calming projects have moved forward to clear a backlog that we had of pending applications and installations. Staff is currently working on requests from twenty-twenty-four and the associated installations. There is an opportunity through this objective to change from the request-based approach we've had for quite a while into potentially a more holistic and analytical approach. So again, would appreciate feedback as you're going through your next iteration. Street lighting study was completed in February of twenty-twenty-four, and replacement of failed failing lights is underway. And we will also be incorporating some of the more high-level improvements of streetlights into the upcoming capital improvement plan and projects. Also wanted to spotlight, as we regularly do, the success of the sidewalk repair program. It's well underway, clearly. We're now in phase ten of that program. And I think it is just a real clear reminder of what a dedicated funding source and skilled staff can approach when coupled together. So appreciation to the voters and all that helped with passage of Measure C, including members of this council in the twenty-twenty-four election to fund safe and accessible sidewalks and pathways. And goal four is pitched to Isabel.
So I will go over uh goals four through six. So goal four, encourage community connectivity through diversity, equity, and inclusivity. Community connectivity was promoted through several events um over the last year, including the Community Expo, Movie in the Park, Bohem Out of the Box, Fourth of July, Four Concerts in the Park, and Winter Wonderland. We've enhanced communication and outreach to residents on city resources and information through Albany Cares and with the facilitation of staffed city booth at several community events. Information was also provided electronically in the e-news through flyers, mailers, banners, and posters. And in the revolving pictures that you were seeing earlier, you saw our latest outreach postcard, which was a year in review and bringing attention to a webpage on our website on accomplishments of the city over the last year, and as well a link or a QR code to our community survey. We also are conducting the community survey and are pleased with the response rate so far. And a new website is under development. We've been working on this for quite a while with Jeremy's lead. And we're expecting to go live in the second quarter of twenty-twenty-five, so very soon. And promotion and assistance with enrollment and tax exemptions and rent rebates for low-income households continue. And we've had an increased number of applicant, applications and eligible applications approved over the last year. So for goal number five, increased revenue to sustain city services. Measure C was approved by voters at the November twenty-twenty-four election. And we're currently reviewing additional revenue opportunities and researching grant funds to help support special projects. Research has been completed to develop a pension fund, funding policy, including a recommendation to consider establishing a pension pre-funding trust. This is anticipated to come to the council audit and fiscal sustainability committee in March or April of twenty-twenty-five for review. Funding partnership with outside agencies includes StopWays.org and ACCC and an ongoing MOU with UC Berkeley for four hundred thousand a year to support operating costs that serve UC Village and two hundred thousand dollars to support city equipment costs. We are also coordinating with a service provider to analyze the current business license tags and provide recommendations for modernization of the tax. And an update on development impact fees is under review with legal counsel. And finally, for goal number six, increased public health, safety, and resiliency. Consultant has been retained to prepare a comprehensive update to the city's code enforcement, administrative citation procedures. Preparation efforts and community engagement regarding disaster preparedness include the completion of the Emergency Operations Plan, revisions to the city's local hazard mitigation plan, and ongoing training opportunities such as the City CERT training program. And the implementation of this seismic retrofit ordinance adopted in twenty-twenty-three is currently underway with the first tier of retrofits to be completed in late twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, questions about the goals and objectives from last year? Anything that you heard that was just presented?
The following is in no way a critique. I just want to state that upfront. But when I went through and I sort of rated complete, ongoing, hasn't really started yet, I think I found from my perspective, it seemed like more things hadn't started than maybe the city manager was relaying. Under some of the goals, the city manager said, you know, all of these are ongoing. And there were some that I didn't think were ongoing. And again, this is no critique. Like I said, a preview of later comments I held last time that we had too many objectives. And so the ones that I, you know, the count of the ones I thought there had not been beginning, real beginning progress on or that were ongoing was sort of supportive of that statement, I found. So I don't know if we want to get into specifics on that, but um, yeah.
What we'll do after we take questions about the review and update is we'll go through each one of the goals. We'll go back to climate action. Is this, and I'll ask, is this still a goal for you for the next two years? And what about these objectives? Are they the right objectives? Does something need to come off the list? And I think that would be a great opportunity for you to um weigh in. It sounds like this is ongoing or it sounds like this hasn't started yet, and then we can get into specifics at that time. Any other questions, reactions, comments into the review and update? Yeah.
I'll just offer that uh in years before I was on council, management at that time didn't provide an update, which I thought was interesting. And so I very much appreciate the very clear, concise, this is the status of things. It was, it's pretty frustrating in the past to see the strategic plan and then there was no scorecard ever. So thank you very much for doing that work.
Yes, council member?
At some point, and I'm not sure where this would like really fit in here, and maybe this is just when we go through the steps, but I I, you know, encourage um staff to come back to us and say, you know, these things are easily attainable, or these things are more complicated, or we're missing a piece here that they feel is important. Having that that back and forth dialogue, I think, is very important for us to hear so that we understand staff's challenges or staff's perspectives of things that maybe are things that we don't necessarily are are purview. Pervude, bleh, can't talk. Too, you know. I think, I think you catch my drift.
Absolutely. And hopefully that will take place here, right? As we start looking for goals and objectives for the next two years. Is this, it may be that something council wants, and it might be politically acceptable given a majority, but it's not administratively feasible, just given resources, staffing, time, or whatever. And so that's where the candid conversation needs to happen, and you're inviting that to happen. That's great. Any other comments, questions, Mayor Lopez?
Yeah, no, I just want to uh extend words of appreciation for our city staff and for much of what has been able to be accomplished in this community. I think after hearing the report, it make, there's like a sense of pride right now to see everything in its totality. It's one thing to see things compartmentalized over the course of a year as things are brought to us on the agenda and we're asked from time to time to give directives on items or issues or concerns that do come up from time to time, or to give directives on uh how we should move forward with opportunities. And so to to hear now, um I believe this, for me, my second session, something like this, to hear in totality what has been accomplished over a year's time. It, again, it makes me really proud. And I have a lot of appreciation for our city staff for providing substantial amount of programming to our community, because I know it's not easy. I struggle just to provide programming for a two-year-old chief of staff. He's not impressed often. Sometimes I have food thrown at me, spaghetti sauce, you name it. But in hearing particularly around our, you know, our progress and updates. are things that are potentially in progress, particularly around housing and transportation. That makes me super excited and I'm sure there are colleagues here today who have some more comments later around those items. But to to see how far we've moved the needle is to see that it's moved considerably compared to where we were at last year. I think we did a lot of kudos to be given to to city staff and to colleagues here on council who have also taken part in the decision-making process to be where we're at today.
Very good. And of course, that doesn't capture all the operational day-to-day services that continue on while the strategic plan items get worked on as well. Okay, any any other comments before we move on and start looking forward? Okay, so let's go back to goal number one, advanced climate action and adaptation. And I'll just tee up a couple of questions for council. Is this still a goal for 2025, 2026? Is there a reason for this to come off the list, for this to come down below the waterline? Given what you heard on the update in terms of what's been accomplished and what still needs to be accomplished? And as the vision setters for the community, is this important to Albany right now at this point in time? I'm seeing, I'm seeing nods around the table. What about the objectives underneath? So you've got three objectives underneath there, and you just had the update on that. Continue to establish a pilot program for electrification of existing buildings. Explore opportunities to facilitate the EV charging and identify opportunities to enhance city program for management of trees. Do those still stay on the list? Do they need to be tweaked? Anything need to come off? Anything need to go on? What are your thoughts? Go ahead.
This is where I have a little bit of, I guess, confusion. I would say the first two, pilot program and they like EV charging are definitely staying on because we're not anywhere near done.
Right.
But I would question if this management of the street trees should move to the underwater as I like to call it.
Yeah.
Because it's pretty far, far along. It's almost become part of the routine work of the city. And there's a couple like that as we go through that I'll bring up. And so I'm not really sure where that goes. I don't want to say, no, we're not doing it.
Right, right.
But are we far enough that we could put it underwater?
Yeah, and that's exactly the right question, right? Are we far enough along that this is now just routine work of the city, right? Below the waterline? Thoughts about that? Yes?
Yeah, so I can offer that that enhanced part of that was some of the ideas that were behind that are that there's a great disparity across the city of street tree coverage. And that, from my perspective, strictly sticking with the adjacent property owners volunteering down the street tree, we might not ever close that gap. There's also been an issue with many of the, whoops, many of the new, the new street trees not surviving. And so another potential enhancement is the city taking over wobbling of new street trees because adjacent property owners aren't doing it enough.
Right, but I'm, and I'm not thinking that we need to discuss that's involved. It's basically, is it far enough along to put it underwater?
Right, and so what I'm getting to is that those things I just described are not underwater because they're not being done. And so these are ideas of how to enhance what is enhanced the program, which would take programmatic effort to bring those elements in, those new elements.
Yes. I I would offer since the street tree plan, it will be coming back to us. At that point, there are likely policy decisions will be making that point that would, once those policy decisions are made, it becomes underwater, right? But at this point, I don't know that I would move it underwater because we have not made those policy decisions. So I think it is one of those things where it might stay on the list, but I expect come spring, summer, we will have a document in front of us, we will make policy decisions, and then it's staff's responsibility to implement those. I mean, as such, it wouldn't necessarily be our focus at that point.
Right, but it is going to be a focus of ours over the next two years in terms of making those policy decisions. And those policy decisions might come with a desire to raise funding somehow.
Agree, agree.
It's necessarily going to be over upon the adoption of of the street tree management plan.
Agree, I did not think of it that way, that yes, the document will come with some policies, but we may decide to continue exploration of other policies or revenue sources.
Yeah.
The items that you mentioned that were still ongoing, is that captured under that objective? Opportunities to enhance city program for management of street trees?
Yes, that was what I had in mind when I read it, thought about it from, yeah.
So to the extent that those are still ongoing, then that this could stay on the list. And then your status update is going to be different next time, right? Because we accomplished those and we talked about that in February 2025. Now we get an update the end of this year and these new items are now underway that have not been accomplished.
And to add context to that and clarity, right along in step with with both of the council members comments there. Step one is the plan. What do we need? How are we going to get it? How much does it cost? Step two is shaping the policies out of that plan because there will be some options to consider. And based on that policy determination, step three is how do we fund this? So we're in step with that, and then that's why you have basically where we are to date, understanding that enhancing the program is more longer term.
Is council okay with leaving objective three on the list? Okay, good. With the expectation, two years from now, fingers crossed, right? This is below the waterline and maybe you have a new objective or maybe you only have two objectives under this, depending on where you are on your EV charging and your electrification. Yes, council member?
Speaking of being below the waterline, I'd also like to maybe, and I, maybe this is something where it needs to be, but having to do with keeping some sort of a check or figuring out what we're doing about the shoreline sea level rise. I know there was information that was probably brought to us during one of the sessions in the past last year talking about plans and updates for other coastal cities that we're going to have to, you know, come to the table with this. Also, another item would be having to do with what our considerations are going to be for Albany Hill for the tree management, the eucalyptus up there with taking into consideration the monarchs that, you know, live and breed up there. Maybe identifying some sort of sanctuary for them with the, but also keeping in control the, you know, the fire hazards and vegetation that we have on the hill. That's been a concern of especially some residents on Pierce.
Yes, timely. On your next agenda on March 3rd, you will have a presentation and staff recommendation on Albany Hill plan. So I would, I would look to that as it is quite comprehensive and scientific in terms of how it's been developed to date with a long list of next steps and funding strategies. Sea level rise, absolutely important and critical, is at the regional level with the city being one of many participants. And I think that's most likely the most effective place for it versus in something so specific to Albany.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for raising Albany Hill. I had it down the list under increased public health, safety, and resiliency. And it's kind of like I juggle which one should be in, but should be somewhere, one or the other. On the second objective, I I know the city has been focused on putting EV chargers in multi-residence buildings and then as we heard also its its own facilities. I wondered if the focus should change to public, publicly accessible EV chargers? If that wouldn't be, provide more benefit for the effort and the spending. I mean, it's a, it's a difficult decision in terms of equity because multi-residence buildings where the residences are rented, then those residents, you know, they don't have the authority to have an EV charger. But on the other hand, if they get put in, I don't know what percentage of them are actually going to get used on a regular basis. And so I'm sort of torn between those two, so I'd be interested in hearing what other people have to say about where the focus should be.
I'm, I'm also kind of curious. I just, you know, as you're talking about that, all of a sudden, I'm kind of seeing this image in my head of, you know, maybe getting, you know, we've got this greenway here across the street. If BART might potentially help fund something like that, I don't know if that's possible. But because that greenway is kind of the, you know, shared and they, I didn't, do know that they did a lot of improvements along that that area. But it's also a very open kind of space that we have there that is really accessible to all people.
Just to clarify, you, are you talking about maybe public chargers along Masonic that are on the edge of the greenway or? Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a good idea because a lot of those blocks are, you know, the parking capacity is quite low.
Right, well, and then senior center and community center would hit those major transit areas. Go ahead.
I I was just going to say, I I kind of look at it as like we need to be doing all. And so there's both continuing the efforts under these apartment buildings. Maybe that's something that goes underwater because it's a program we've already done once and it's really about finding grants or continuing to find apartment owners who are willing to work with the city. I do think there's a need for generally publicly accessible EV chargers across the city. I also think there needs to be a hard look at what I note as illegally, people illegally charging on street from a, in front of a personal, single-family house. Technically, you are not allowed, or legally, you are not allowed to run that power cable above the sidewalk, on the sidewalk. Some people run them under the sidewalk. And I think there's a need for us to standardize the ability for someone to do that. And what are the requirements when one does that? I think it is absolutely a need to be able to have someone personally charge that way, but we can't have it in the ad hoc way that it is currently done. And that's, it's not necessarily a program the city's going to limit, but it is kind of a code enforcement issue.
And that goes to speak exactly, we were looking at a property who does not have a garage. So the only opportunity to charge the vehicle would be illegally under, on the sidewalk or, yeah.
So it seems like these objectives can be rather broad.
Yes.
And we don't want to get too specific. So I think explore opportunities to facilitate electric vehicle charging is fine. It covers, it covers all of the above. And I don't think we want to get into individual examples. I think we should leave it as is.
Thank you for that. And then I see Nicole and Isabel taking notes over there in terms of capturing those details that go underneath the objectives. And and you're absolutely right, the objectives are intentionally of broad statements. Not as broad as the goal, but intentionally done because you don't want to, they're not work plans, they're objectives. Okay, go ahead.
One other thought, which was to to change the framing of the goal. Over the last years, I've started saying reduce greenhouse pollution and adapt to climate change, just to make it more specific. And also because, use the word pollution, and that gets people's attention even more because people generally think pollution is bad, as climate action can be a little bit nebulous. I mean, I think most people in the community understand what that means, but I like the more specific.
And the suggested wording was?
Reduce greenhouse pollution and adapt to climate change.
I think the the goal was set this way to match our climate adaptation plan. So to me, it kind of works, it matches what we already have, but I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and I think, you know, by, because from my perspective, language, policy language evolves through time. You know, I guess another example is we had a bicycle master plan in the late 90s and the next one was called an active transportation plan. The term of art, so.
Well, and you are, when you are wording these goals, I mean, you're speaking to yourself and staff, but you're also speaking to the community and you want it accessible and meaningful and relevant to the community. And the name of the goal doesn't have to match the city plan. There's no expectation on that. Thoughts about changing the the wording of the goal? Reduce greenhouse pollution and adapt to climate change. Work for folks? Yeah, okay. I'm seeing nods. I'm, anybody really strongly opposed to that? Okay, let's make the change.
Okay, one other thing about trees. So, you know, in the climate, in the past plan, it was specifically about street trees. And I think that was an appropriate move at the time. I think now that we have a plan that's near finished and will be in front of us, I wonder if if council is interested in extending to look at now our trees in the public realm that is not the street and potentially trees on private property because that has come in front of the planning commission, I believe, and city council in terms of trees. And I raised this because I was, I found it interesting in seeing the survey that was done, not recognizing that, for instance, the trees along the Loney Greenway are not actually in the street right of way. And so they are not actually inventory, they are not actually part of our plan, they're not included in our analysis of what are our risks for tree disease, what are our risks for many things? And so understanding that we've, we've complete, we're near, nearly done with the streets, but moving on to understanding the inventory in our parks. We just adopted a parks master plan not that long ago, and so it's not, not necessarily updating our parks master plan, but understanding what we have so that we kind of have a full inventory when it comes around to eventually doing urban forestry and us having due policies on that, understanding what that is in totality would be, I think, something that would be helpful. I don't know if that's an objective so much as a, as an effort, but it is, it doesn't fit under one of the objectives because our specific objective before was about street trees as opposed to.
It could be enhance, enhance the urban forest. It should be all encompassing and sufficiently general at the same time.
Yeah, because that would incorporate the management of the street trees, but it would extend it beyond to other public, public, potentially private property.
Enhance. I know we have some issues with the ones over here near the BART trains.
And council member, are you suggesting that this gets added into objective three or a new standalone objective?
I think as just described, actually, I'm kind of intrigued to just turning objective three into enhancement and maintenance of the urban.
Forest.
Urban forest.
Yeah.
Knowing that what we've already started on the street trees falls under that.
Right, so it could be for management of street trees and to enhance the urban forest, something along those lines.
I think we're just saying it would, the new language would be enhancing, maintain the urban forest, period, stop.
Yeah, yeah, and just take out street trees.
Yeah, yeah. Street trees would be an implied subset of that as part of the urban forest.
What do you think, Nicole?
Sure, that works fine.
For enhancement.
And recall that under the waterline, a lot of the open space trees are under the waterline.
Okay, very good. Okay, so made a couple of changes here to objective three, the wording of the of the goal itself. And I think we're ready to move on to goal number two.
I do have a couple of suggestions. I haven't been able to speak on any of these topics yet. But I do think it's worth considering adding a couple new objectives. The goal of this, our strategic plan is to respond to what we, what needs action now. And we are in a time of turmoil when it comes to bringing truth and light. And we are in a time of turmoil when it comes to, uh, bringing truth and light to climate action and to the climate crisis. And so I would like to entertain the idea of having an objective item around exploring ways to finance climate action sustainability. I think considering the current federal administration, there's a lot at risk for us not to have access to in the coming years. And if we can get ahead of it and be proactive for years to come to be able to find creative ways to support climate action, um, financing it through creative and innovative ways, whether that through a ballot measure or, uh, some other, uh, type of funding mechanism. Uh, secondly, I think, uh, again, in the spirit of being strategic and in response to times, Vice Mayor McQuaid and I, we had the, uh, opportunity of recently interacting with, uh, with folks from, uh, leadership in, uh, the Aloney Tribe. And something that, uh, was mentioned was about the interest of people wanting to know more about indigenous knowledge, indigenous place and space. And I do think it is worth maybe considering having an objective item around incorporating traditional ecological knowledge into aspects of city climate resiliency action. And I'm certainly open to what other council members have to say, or, you know, please do not feel intimidated to push back. I don't want anyone to feel like, I can't say nothing because he's just, yeah, don't worry.
And just, uh, on the second suggestion, uh, incorporating native.
Incorporating traditional ecological knowledge.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, reactions, thoughts?
Yeah, on the, the funding side, I mean, I will note, while it's not by law dedicated, the, the city has the one-third, the recommendation for voters to spend one-third of the Measure D revenue on greenhouse pollution and, and climate change adaptation. And I think that would have, for the last fiscal year, that one-third would total around $300,000. So from, and that passed in 2020. So I'm, I'm, for myself, I'm not clear if I would want to go back to the voters with another, you know, asking for some other tax to be passed to provide additional funding for that. I appreciate the sentiment that we don't know if we're going to have any support from the federal level. Um, on the second, yeah, I'm, I'm quite interested in that. I've been, I know the city is, well, I think the city, that's why I'm quite interested, has been working with, with various groups to incorporate, to learn about and to incorporate indigenous knowledge into the management of, of Albany Hill, I think. And I particularly given our land acknowledge, but I think having a statement around that as a, as an objective would be quite appropriate. And would help me because then in the reporting of how that goes, and I would learn more about myself about that activity.
Other reactions, thoughts? The, there, the, the, explore the funding and then the incorporating traditional ecological knowledge. Vice Mayor?
As, as Robin said, we met this morning with, um, tribal leaders. And I would like to make that a standalone either goal or objective, rather than starting to parse it out into ecological or cultural or religious or whatever. However, I would like to make it a standalone item. A thought.
I'll, I'll just quickly emphasize that, um, the, the common phrasing is, is traditional ecological, ecological knowledge or tech. That, that's why I said that particular phrase when it comes to like climate adaptation and, um, and climate action. But still a very valid point, and I think that's something we should also consider.
Is staff prepared for that objective?
I think we have an example of collaborating with certain representatives of certain indigenous communities through our work on Albany Hill. I think we have a lot to learn in terms of who we're engaging with and on what elements. I understand the importance in, in incorporating this into city objectives and planning initiatives in terms of a tangible, when we're here in two years and I have a tangible report on if this is a direct objective. I'd want to understand more what, um, the expectation of, of that status report look like. This is my initial feedback. And with regard to the funding piece, if I may, um, we didn't put the webpage up, but if you tally the, um, general fund, uh, use, the use of our general fund for climate adaptation and action or greenhouse gas pollution and, um, adaptation to climate change. It's much beyond, um, the one-third of that general tax. So when we talk about the financial with regard to environmental services and climate adaptation and all of the initiatives therein, um, we have a significant investment in that.
So if, if I may, that, that could be an argument for the objective. If we're spending more on that objective than the Measure D revenue, then that's sort of supportive of, kind of like with Measure C, when the general fund was supporting, uh, the engineering costs, as I understand it, of the sidewalk repair program and then Measure C is now, well, will be paying for that. So we'll no longer be paying from the general fund. So that is somewhat of an argument for, for having a measure to increase special, you know, special funding for that area. I guess I have trepidation because that in the context of, of the city's finances in general, is that the need to focus on in the next two years? So I'm kind of, having heard what city managers said, I'm more amenable to it, but I'm like, okay, that's one thing, but kind of need to see all the, all the different potential financial goals, um, together to decide which ones are going to be. Because I, I expect we're going to have more financial objectives than we really have capacity to go after. So maybe that, maybe that goes in a parking lot.
Yeah.
And then we look at all, all the things that touch on financial objectives. I mean, I'm not saying a parking lot forever, I'm saying just for the, the study session or for when this comes back to council.
The benefit of general fund is that when you increase the general fund with any revenue measure, you're substantiating all of those prog, programs. And because all of that work is already in your operating budget, that's well funded and supported. So any increase to the general fund therefore assists in this program area as well.
I guess I'm just thinking a lot of the revenue sources, well, I'm, property tax revenue sources, I understand them, they, they can't be general fund measures. They have to be special fund measures, so.
I think, uh, understanding where you're coming from, Mayor Lopez. I think even, even if this doesn't become an objective that goes into the strategic plan, it is something that we as council members can be lobbying at the state level, understanding that, you know, climate change bonds have been passed and making sure that smaller communities like Albany, who are perceived to be rich, right, are still receiving their fair share of funds to help address climate, climate change. And I know that was definitely in some of the conversations that I've been having with state senators and assembly members, is making sure that Albany, Little Albany is, is, is getting its fair share.
So I'm hearing, uh, uh, potentially putting the funding in a parking lot or having a study session around that in tandem with other, uh, your overall funding, uh, sources and where you're allocating your, 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 your budget. Does that work for council? And on the, um, traditional ecological knowledge, what, to the city manager's question, what are the expectations to staff? What are they to do around that? Like what would, what would success look like? What would an outcome look like?
I could speak on that. Expectation would really just start with initiating, uh, the engagement. And I know it's going to, using a response with the question, but then utilizing, going from those engagements to understand what the expectations of the local indigenous tribes are. I think sometimes we, we in Western science get ahead of ourselves and, uh, feel that, uh, what we establish is what's right. We're not taking into account, or sometimes, uh, eco, traditional ecological, ecological knowledge just exists in our periphery. We know it's there, but we don't fully take into account. And I think, uh, the expectation would be that we engage and understand what their expectations are. What are they willing to share? Because that's also an important component. Not every tribe, every tribe different, um, throughout, uh, throughout the world. They don't exist as a monolith and not every tribe is willing to, uh, just openly share what traditional knowledge that they have that, uh, benefit their, their environment, especially in a system that has wronged them for generations. So I think, I hope that makes sense, that we engage and then understand what their expectations are from us as a city.
Okay, thoughts about that, councils, council members and mayor, yes?
Yeah, it was amenable to, to making it more expansive or less specific. Um, and I wonder if it, we haven't gotten to goal four, but maybe it could go under goal four. Is that more expansive?
That's where I put it.
Oh, yeah. It's one of the, uh, question I've had for quite a long time and haven't made the opportunity to, to explore is when I moved to this area, the Greenway was called the Aloney Greenway. And that was how I learned the word, so it had that utility. But on the other hand, given what the Greenway, given the origin of the Greenway, um, I don't know, I've always had this question of, do people, Aloney people appreciate, and it won't be a monolithic answer, but do they appreciate that feature being named after them as a people? Because it was a railroad, uh, so it was a, was a one vector in oppression that occurred. So I think including it under goal four would allow for conversations like that as well.
Well, I could give a very quick history lesson because I was schooled earlier that in the year 1971, uh, several elders who were, uh, who were from the original Verona band had came together and, uh, established what is now the Aloney Tribe as their unified identity. Uh, and so that's where, uh, the commonality of the word in it is rooted from. But they are still more or less the continuation of the original Verona band of Alameda County that has been here for generation.
Yeah, and so I was just saying, I was curious if, um, if they were involved, they, uh, in the naming of the Aloney Greenway, or was that named for them?
Yeah, that's a good question, I do not know.
So that's why I'm saying putting it under goal four would allow, you know, it's been, been on my mind for, for years. Would allow that to be potentially part of the conversation with peoples as well.
And expand it, uh, if it went under goal four, expand it beyond just, um, traditional ecological knowledge? Okay, I'm seeing nods around the table on that. So let's come back to that with, uh, when we come to goal number four. I'm just going to do a quick process check. So we have now worked through goal one, and it took us a half hour. Okay, so, uh, and, and not that I'm moving anybody along too quickly, but I just want to put that out there. And we have five more goals to go. Okay, are we ready to move on to number two? Uh, promote housing availability and quality. And you have five, is it five objectives underneath that one? Let me check that, yes, five objectives underneath that. First off, on the goal, going to, going to keep housing under the goal? I'm, I'm going to ask, but I sort of know what the answer is, but I'm going to ask anyways, and yes, nods around the table. Identify ways to incentivize more housing development, including zoning or other code updates. Establish funding opportunities to develop affordable housing. Continue to educate and inform the community regarding housing rights, tenants' rights, et cetera. Eval, evaluate resources needed to conduct specific plan for Solano Avenue. Develop ballot measure to update city council's authority to change single family zoning standards and explore funding opportunities for acquisition, acquisition of available open spaces. Changes to those objectives, anything come off the list? You've got six objectives, I, that's a lot of objectives. There's, this is a very healthy goal here. Go ahead.
You asked about coming off the list. I would question if we need to leave on the list the ballot measure to update the authority. It sounds like, to update the authority to consider changes to single family zoning. It sounds like with state law that that may not be something that we, we need to do anymore. I have thoughts on all the other ones.
Yeah, so, um, on number five, does that come off the list, just given the, the state focus?
I have a question for staff. I, I thought the reason why we had that was because of the other portion of measure, measure that dealt with our parking and that it applied to Western Albany and the limitation of single family only ever being single family. Are we saying that state law has now superseded that measure? And so as such, we don't need to relook at that? And if that's the case, I'm happy to get rid of it. But if state law hasn't actually superseded that question, I, I think it has, I think it would be boo hoo as a city to look at Western Albany and the limitations on single family.
I think that we can look at that with our technical staff and, um, develop perhaps an updated iteration of this objective.
Thank you.
Well, my understanding is state law has superseded, basically any, you know, area zone, single family duplexes could be built by right. Lot if it's over, I don't remember what size, but you remember what size? It's like two thou, it's pretty small, maybe 2,500 feet, but I know that's also one. But anyway, it's smaller than the smallest, the smaller Albany lot sizes can be subdivided into by right, and a duplex can be built on each by right. And to my knowledge, unless there's case law, otherwise that's.
Where, so absolutely it supersedes zoning, but I don't know if it supersedes a ballot measure. That, 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 that's a question that I don't, because absolutely it supersedes zoning, but I don't know if it supersedes a ballot measure.
So maybe the action item would be for the city attorney, city attorney's office to look into that. Rather than say it's on definitively now, get an answer to that. And if the answer is yes, it's superseded, then it doesn't get included. And if the answer is it isn't superseded, then it gets included.
Well, and I think we're seeing a ton more coming down the pipe, you know, on this. So, um, I would hesitate doing too much here because we're, you know, the states.
Again, I just go back to if, if legal comes back saying that state law supersedes the ballot measure, we're good. But my understanding was the whole reason we had it was because we had a ballot measure that only could be replaced by another ballot measure. Or, you know.
Did, did that state law exist two years ago?
There were many state laws that existed two years ago, I don't know if that one did.
Yeah, I think, I think this has happened over this, this strategic plan period, but anyway.
So on this one, it sounds like we, we need the attorney to, to weigh in with, with information and research. Okay, and, and, and as council member Mickey said, if it does supersede a ballot measure, state law, well, then it comes off, right? Then it's a no-brainer, and if not, then you can revisit this and whether or not it stays on.
Well, and this actually kind of leads me, ballot measure talking and housing and stuff like that. This kind of also leads me into, um, repealing Measure K, I believe it is, for Albany Hill. I think that's something that we need to discuss and move the needle forward on.
I actually had that as part of, um, number six, where it's explore funding opportunities for acquisition of available open space, highlighting the Measure K, and, and to say highlighting. And and to say highlighting Measure K isn't exactly how you would write it, but you sort of get the gist.
Okay, so that Objective Six, Acquisition of Available Open Space. And are we saying to add in Albany Hills, or I'm sorry, Measure K? Repealing Measure K, does that fit underneath there?
I think that's sort of the ultimate goal, but I'm not sure what the language should say.
Okay.
So those are two. Acquiring the open space somewhat different than Measure K. Measure K establishes the essentially the zoning or specific plan for the property. So they're not, they're not exactly the same. I had other objectives I'm thinking go away, but to jump to, I had bringing in a new objective of fulfill housing element policy consideration commitments, which is a, you know, a big item, and reforming Measure K is one of our commitments. So I had a housing element. And so that might be a way to to recognize it without without naming it. Because I wouldn't necessarily want to there's sort of a tasking order in the housing element with dates, things have to be done. And I don't remember where Measure K is in that. I wouldn't want to use this strategic plan to have it jump the line over other things, particularly because we're gonna be under the the eye of the state very soon, having fulfilled on our housing element commitments.
Well, I'm just, I guess part of me is thinking that there's gonna be a lot going that's gonna need to be done prior to. So I don't think it'll necessarily jump the line of stuff. I think that but it might be something that's worth getting ahead of, like just even with research and any testing or any of these other things that could be done in succinct, you know, with everything moving at the same time.
Is that what you're referring to? To changing the specific plan. So that wouldn't have soil testing because that's just sort of changing the zoning essentially. I could see soil testing. You mentioned soil testing. I can see soil testing if we're talking about acquiring the property. But as I say,
But there's also the blanking on what I'm trying to say. But there, I feel like there's there's also some additional planning that needs to go in as far as, you know, also what resources will we need if that measure gets repealed? You know, how to look at any additional fire, police, other potential services that'll be needed to maintain something when that moves forward. So just to kind of have this background ball rolling. And and that's why I'm thinking of it in that sense.
Again, if it gets repealed, then it would revert to whatever the underlying zoning is for it. I don't know, maybe more helpfully is that I think it's the same staff that will be pursuing all pursuing all the policy commitments that we have under the housing element. And so to say, well, you know, I think would be potentially jumping the line to say Measure K, we want you to start doing preparatory work on that because then they wouldn't it'd be the same capacity as as used to address all the other policy commitments that we've made in the housing element. So it's the same people that are involved in both. And so because we already have it in the housing element, and there are some tasking order in the housing element, I'd rather just and we adopted the housing element, I'd rather have it just flow. You know, it's not gonna get lost because it's a commitment we've made to the state that we're gonna, we're going to revise or place revision of Measure K on the ballot. So it's already already captured.
Is that?
That is essentially all of it in a nutshell. So you're aware we are intending or trying to intend for twenty twenty-six. It will require some environmental review. And that can sometimes the timeline can be a little bit indefinite with that. It's also complicated with all of the other work we're doing on Albany Hill, which would need to speak the same language to one another in terms of moving that initiative forward. So tentative goal is twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, okay. So that's, I was just trying to make sure everything was kind of folding in around the same timing. So.
Can I make a recommendation for removal from the objectives? Item four, evaluate resources needed to conduct a specific plan for Solano Avenue.
Yes.
This one's near and dear to me, but I think given, again, state law changes, which are already allowing more development on Solano Avenue, given all the other priorities that we have already, plans underway and plans that need to be done in housing element, I think that is one that while I would love for it to have been done in the first two years while I was on council, I fully understand why it wasn't wasn't possible to start. And I don't think it makes sense for us to focus over the next two years on that. That might be for a future council, and perhaps I'll make public comment in the future to make sure that Solano Avenue is actually given a specific plan.
Okay, proposal to take Objective Four off. Seeing nods? Okay, Objective Four comes off. And what I heard from Councilmember Jordan is a recommendation for a new objective, fulfill housing element commitments. So what do you think about that? Reactions to that?
And what would that remove? Would that remove everything else?
No, that was just a new one. I may have other ones that I would suggest removing as well. So that would be an addition.
That's kind, I mean, there's a lot in here that's in the housing element. So I think it kind of is overarching.
Yeah.
So why don't you maybe say what you else you'd remove?
Yeah, so I think I am, Objective One, identify ways to incentivize more housing development, including zoning or other code updates. I mean, I think staff has been bringing updates as fast as they can to keep up with state law. So again, to your point, council member, state law is, state law is changing, so I wouldn't necessarily want to prioritize trying to keep up with that, given what's going on. Somebody else out there?
Yeah, I I hope that it isn't needed as a council objective and that it's just an under-the-water thing that staff is doing. I am super excited and super supportive of staff coming in and bringing common problems that they see in our zoning code and asking for us to update those. I think that's really just best practice. And so I'm glad we had it as an objective in the past, but I think I'm hoping it's just kind of city culture under the water.
Okay, we're taking Objective One off. Seeing nods? Let's take Objective One off. Others?
So Objective Three, I kind of go either way on this one. I mean, to some extent, it's feeling like it's moved below the waterline. Although I have heard statement that some property owners aren't fulfilling their commitment to inform their tenants about the various provisions that are available to them, which does occur to me. The city does send out postcards on things with some regularity now. So maybe the city should be sending out a postcard to provide uniform information, which, you know, would be an effort, which would suggest leaving this in as something more, I don't know, something useful that the city could start doing. I don't know if it really needs to be at the objective level though, in order to have the city do that, because it's work, but it's not a not a huge expense. So I'm kind of interested.
There is also a bunch of new laws regarding that as well. And I think that the property providers are are getting educated on that right now as far as what they're required to do. And there's gonna be more code enforcement along those lines as well, from my understanding.
Counterargument to keeping it would be that one of the things that I appreciate is an update on on steps that the staff has been able to do. And so by keeping it, knowing that, as you mentioned, sending postcards out to all renters or whatnot, that those are the kind of updates that would come back to us, and 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 I think they're measurable. But I also agree, if it becomes kind of a city culture thing, it's really, it's really under the water. So I I could go either way.
Well, there's in the connectivity piece, there's a thing about increased accessibility, enhanced communication to residents. Maybe we could fold it into that. If we do that, though, I think it needs, it talks about tenants' right and housing provider responsibilities. I think it should go both tenants' rights and responsibilities and houser provide, housing provider rights and responsibilities.
Definitely, I would agree with that.
What you just referred to is a modification of something under goal four currently, or is that a?
I believe it says continue to educate and inform the community regarding housing to include tenants' rights and housing provider responsibilities. I think they should both have both.
Also, as a reminder, the initiatives within the housing element certainly speak to this area as well. So this work is targeted, underway, forthcoming, all of the above.
So that suggests taking it off then.
With the new addition of the housing element.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, so we take off Objective Three. And again, that doesn't mean it's not being communicated. It's below the waterline, and it can get folded into your goal four in terms of information out to the community. But Three, as stated here, comes off. And then we, did you have another one, Councilmember Jordan, to come off, or was that it?
That was it.
Okay, so then let's put back on the table the potential new objective, fulfill housing element commitments. That makes sense? And and I'm guessing there's direction that's kind of built in.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that work for council to put that in as an objective? You've taken off Two.
I just have a question about number two, establish funding opportunities. Is that included in the, specific enough in the housing element?
That I don't think is, so I would prefer to leave that one in.
I would change it to explore rather than establish.
Fine with me.
Yep. Okay, I'm hearing nods to explore funding opportunities for Objective Two. And I'm sensing agreement for the new objective on housing element.
Can you repeat it one more time?
Fulfill housing element commitments.
My only concern is in two years, we won't. I mean, the housing element is
Yeah, I mean, I I would say as City Manager of L.A., some of these things have been completed, some of them are ongoing.
Right.
I don't know that having them in the strategic plan implies it has to be done in two years. Because if it did, then there's a lot of things that a city would never do.
Right, but I wonder if fulfills the right word.
Well, I I think fulfill is right because there are certain commitments that we made of actions to take over two years. It's not that the housing element would be fulfilled in two years, but those things that we committed to the state that we were gonna do over the next two years, I have heard from staff, we better do them.
Is that, okay.
I I'm for this in the objective, but I'm also, even if it weren't in the objective, we would be doing it.
All of this stuff.
Right, but but again,
Sorry, no, the housing element, like we are, we are bound by state law to do them, or severe penalties.
And and what you're doing here is you're saying, we need to draw attention to this, right? This this deserves a special place in the all the work that the city's doing, because it's that important.
Yeah, for me, it's also it's giving credit where credit is due, because staff's gonna be spending so much effort on it.
And so the the language is good to the Vice Mayor's point. You might say strive to fulfill the housing element commitments, but that weakens it. And so we'll we'll move on. Are we okay with Goal Two with the changes? And Nicole, Isabel, you feel like you got every, okay, excellent. Let's move on to Goal Number Three. Your streets and transportation. One, two, three, four, five objectives. Update the active transportation plan, citywide traffic surveys to obtain objective data.
I wonder if we should just take them one at a time. Have you reread through them just?
Let's go ahead. Update, update the active transportation plan. And again, you've got five objectives here. That's another healthy goal. There's a lot to do here. Where are you on active transportation?
It's underway.
It's underway?
Probably remain.
Okay, keep, keep, keep on going, okay? Counsel's good with that. Two, the street survey, street traffic surveys geared towards traffic calming.
I'd leave it.
Yeah, and and I would I I would love to keep it. I my biggest hope had been that the traffic survey would have been completed either concurrently or before the active transportation plan was finished, so they would help inform it just to give more information and insight into solutions that might be needed on more heavily traveled road or a better understanding actually where the traffic is. On the flip side, I think, should it happen after the active transportation plan, it can help us prioritize. And I'm hoping when the active transportation plan comes back to us, that it'll have a general matrix, but that we'll have the ability to adjust that based on traffic patterns.
Very good. Three, the shuttle service, connect community to business areas.
So I I read the staff report on this, which I appreciate the direction to that. I hadn't noticed that before. And based on that, it looks like it would be quite costly. So from the analogs that were in there, it was between three hundred and four hundred thousand dollars a year for half-hour service, nine hours a day, five days a week for commute time. And that's a lot for us. I don't know where we would get that money. I mean, for scale, our sidewalk repair program has been a little over two hundred thousand dollars a year. So this would be, you know, pushing towards double that. And for a half-hour frequency, that's so low that people can't just show up and take it, which I think was part of the motivation behind it, was that people would be able, you know, really provide mobility, but on a half-hour service, that's not just show up and be there.
Well, and with this one, I was hoping that it would not only, you know, provide alternative mobility, you know, connecting the residents, community members on the hill to the shopping on Solano to help benefit the city financially as well, because then we're driving the revenue to Solano Avenue as opposed to Branch ninety-nine, which is in another city. And they're, you know, getting the revenue base off of that. So my goal here was to try to, you know, bring, bring in more revenue by redirecting the people who are in those units that are on the hill. One of the things that, you know, potentially where we look at some potential funding here, as I do know that Emery Go Round, it's property owner-based bid that helps pay for this. And so maybe incorporating potentially some of that, but also with the climate goals. Maybe taking some funding there because it will relieve some of the heavy congestion and traffic along the streets, and that that could help with that that goal as well. So
Yeah, I you know, I think if we, if we think about from an accessibility, from an equity standpoint, I think, you know, we are doing all we can on after-transportation, which provides definitely for a larger segment of our community, better access, more climate resilient approaches to transportation. But there is this question about, you know, those those that maybe can't, aren't, aren't able to do as much after-transportation, and how can we assist them? And we do have the Paratransit program, but I think there's, there's a question of how do we do more? It is, it is a funding issue, though, and and Emery Go Round, I mean, it's they have Pixar and Bayer and like really big businesses and funding that. And I would love for us to just have one or two of Emeryville's big employers in Albany. And and so I think that my biggest concern has always been the financing. How do we realistically make the financing work?
And and that's what your Transportation Commission indicated. So maybe this objective really focuses around explore funding for a shuttle. And to your original comments around this, it's expensive.
Yeah, and again, that's for half-hour service. So I just, it's been a perennial idea, but I'm obviously not in favor of it.
Yeah, and did I sort of hear you say that, given the cost, we might take this off the list?
That's, yeah, that would be my preference. Because again, if you, I mean, I think for those kinds of trips, you know, it's one thing for commute trips, where people do it every day, they can sort of get used to a schedule, operate on a schedule. I think for those kinds of trips, you know, it's one thing for commute trips, where people do it every day, they can sort of get used to a schedule, operate on a schedule. For shopping trips, people tend to be more spontaneous, and a half hour service doesn't meet that, so you'd really want at least fifteen minute service, which then you're doubling the cost. And as much as I appreciate the economic development idea, I don't see that that's going to enhance shopping so much that the city would receive more revenue than it would cost. And I think it would be a huge financial sink for the city, and I don't think it's really going to serve that many trips.
I, I, um, knowing the objectives and the end goal, I think one of the things to continue to do is continue to push AC Transit. That better service, particularly at Albany Hill, needs to occur. Because that is one of our highest populations that is kind of the most removed from the rest of Albany. And so, so that would, would be an avenue to continue to explore and push, that, that we get better connection between Albany Hill and Solano Avenue and beyond. Like, I would be interested in continuing to have us look, continue to look for funding sources. But I don't know if that's a staff-led initiative, or if that's really council members working to help identify additional funding sources.
Thoughts about that? Uh, so the options here, keep it on the list, and then the primary focus of the objective is explore funding, get funding for it. Or the other option is to take it off the list. It's, it's a good idea, but it's not going to be possible, it's not, we can't.
It may not be cost effective now, but perhaps it will be soon in the future, so I'd like to keep it on the list.
Could we?
Oh, go ahead.
Could we establish a third category of having like a parking lot of things? I know, it's not the best plan, but I don't want to lose this, there's so many things about it I like. And I feel like a three-year-old, but I want it. So I'd like to keep it in our consciousness. I mean, there's, you know, there's other things like that, too, but I think that would be a good solution to this. It's not going to happen in two years, but let's not lose sight of it.
And if you did keep it on the list, and the focus was exploring funding, my sense is that's not a super heavy lift for staff, or maybe, maybe I'm wrong about that.
Look at that face.
It's more about who. And with this goal and object, these associated objectives and some of your others, it's the same group of people. So what do you not want them to do, and what are your priorities? Hearing earlier today that perhaps we weren't as successful in accomplishing that, I want to be very cognizant of how we're building this going forward. So it is realistic in the next two years, and I can be pretty confident that operation of a shuttle would not be something we'd be able to stand up operationally. Funding, you know, we could do some analysis, but it wouldn't be conclusive, and it, we would be spending that time instead of, instead of moving on forward other initiatives. So it's a decision.
I think Vice Mayor McQuaid had said something that deeply aligned with how I feel. Like, we, I think it's important to keep it in our consciousness. However, I, you don't see it as a necessary objective item for this list at this time. I mean, we, something that would need to be taken into account as well is ensuring, and I haven't had a chance to read the analysis, but I'm, I am assuming that the, the intent is to have zero emission or electric vehicles. And there's, there's no telling how costs could skyrocket at any moment now. But I think I'm, I'd be more in line with exploring opportunity to reconnect, disenfranchise neighborhoods or communities. I think that it will help keep it, keep this idea within our consciousness, but makes it a bit more broad. I think we've, we've all kind of touched on this before about AC Transit bus route, and it, and Pier Street resident becoming disconnected. And my honest personal opinion is disenfranchised from being connected from the rest of the community. So I think if we kind of pivot this objective to be intentionally broad, so not just this idea of a shuttle service, but maybe an idea of like a EV parking ghost, parking lot, whatever, all these different opportunities that could ring about. If we keep it broad, to explore opportunities for disconnected or disenfranchised community members for public, not, not limited to public transportation, but, but that is one aspect of how folks have become disconnected. And it still allows us to have an opportunity to be creative, and work with city staff, and be creative on what connectedness could look like for folks in Albany Hill as well, what connectedness could look like for people in the UC Village who may, may be at risk of losing services as well. So I think adapting to be broad might be the better choice here.
And so that would change the, the, the objective from a shuttle service, or maybe it's explore opportunities for, it's not just shuttle service. You, you want it broader than that, to connect disenfranchised members of the community? Okay, and.
Yeah, I would move it down to four.
Go for increased community connectivity through diversity, equity, and inclusion.
I think it's two different uses of connectivity, though.
Yeah, exactly, I think a, a different meaning of the term connectivity there, but.
So maybe we still keep it in that parking lot area? And, and then, you know, that's obviously already kind of, I guess, identified in that, so.
It might be increased transportation connections for disenfranchised segments of Albany.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So do we, does council want to go in that direction to have an objective? One more time with the wording, Councilmember?
Increase transportation connections for disenfranchised portions of the city. If the mayor agrees.
Thoughts about that? And that, I'm not sure if that is in place of current objective three or a new objective.
It's in place of.
In place of, okay.
How does that work for staff, though? It seems like that's just scrambling this board salad, but it's the same. You know, I, for a few, for additional things I was thinking about is something about enhancing relationship with regional, other regional electeds. And then I'm, sitting here, I've added AC Transit, other regional organizations, regional bodies. There may be a way to do it that way, so we're pushing AC Transit, but we're not putting it all on staff.
Well, I, I mean, in one sense, I agree with you, Vice Mayor, but on the other hand, I, it, it's, how much of that is actually us as council as opposed to what staff is doing? And I think one of the worries I have about what we have on, on that now, what we're proposing, changing, or even in, enhancing relationships with boards, is still asking staff to do it, as opposed to us as electeds, talking with AC Transit Board members, us talking with BART members, us, us doing some of that connectivity, because in the end, our staff can't tell AC Transit what to do with their transit lines.
Right. But elected to elected, we can have some influence, perhaps, perhaps not, but anyway, we haven't gotten that far yet.
Yeah.
I, I just worry that, again, it's stuff that we're putting on staff's plate that.
Right.
I don't know that they're going to come back with much, having been done, or, or, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember McKee, no, it's spot on. I'll, I'll just give a, a brief example of work that doesn't necessarily have an endpoint with regard to this overall topic area. Absolutely important topic area, the nuts and bolts of what the city will do is try to partner with others. And that's what you would hear back in synthesis on this. For example, this Friday, we have a joint meeting with representatives from UC and AC Transit to discuss opportunities. And it's become relatively apparent that those opportunities are slim at best, at least in the foreseeable future, due to operational demand and lack of staffing regionally with transit service. So important goal, we will partner, we will have conversations, we already are. So it would be a council decision of, does this, is this of criticalness to you to insert in here? The work is ongoing.
Yeah, and you raised an interesting question about, you know, who, who is the audience, who, who are the workers on the strategic plan? I mean, I've, I've viewed it not as just a work plan for staff, but for me as well. Now, obviously, some of the things are very much staff, but objective five here, you know, well, staff definitely did work in crafting Measure C. I did work on that as well, and then in seeking the vote of reauthorization, which is not a council function, that's a team function. But as a council member, I pursued the reauthorization, I ran the campaign. So I don't see everything on the strategic, strategic plan as like, you know, we adopt the strategic plan and then we walk away, and it's on staff to do, I see this as a mix of things that we do, they do, or partner on doing.
Given that staff is already working with transit partners and other agencies, I'm, I'm guessing this doesn't need to go on the list. The work's already happening, you've got a meeting on Friday as an example of that. Does that work for folks? And, and, and that, of course, doesn't preclude you all from partnering with your other electeds in, in other areas and trying to have your influence, initiate influence there.
I mean, I would like to look at it the other ways, which is, it can be on the list because our staff is already doing some things, and so it can be reported out to us, because I think this, you've recognized there's a, there's a role for the electeds in this. And so by having it here, it would sort of motivate that communication, so that we know what's going on at staff levels, so that when we interact with AC Transit Board members.
Right.
We've got a three hundred and sixty view, and we can work as a team more effectively.
So it might be an objective of collaborate with transportation partner agencies, and that includes both staff and electeds and council establishing that collaboration.
I think that would be the functional mode, I think the goal as our, as described would remain the same.
Yeah.
And that would be how we would accomplish it, but the goal would remain enhance transportation options for disadvantaged portions of, of the city.
Thoughts about that, Nicole, to work to, because that's the proposal on the table, increase, increase transportation connectivity for disenfranchised members of the community?
It works, and I think that we have a lot of good examples of the handoff between elected and staff level, so this would be another example.
So our, council, are you okay with that? That, that is in place of the current objective three? I'm seeing nods, I'm seeing nods around the table.
I'll just, I just want to say, yes, I'm okay with it, but two, just a reminder for us as elected on council, and any future elected, that when we talk about connectivity, we need not limit ourselves to just buses and shuttle program. There are other nearby communities that have been very proactive and creative in part, making partnership with companies are getting appropriate funding nearby in Richmond, California. They have a pretty solid pilot program that's taken off to provide rides for people from very specific communities and neighborhoods to get around town. So there are things that we can actively as elected look at as well, and talk to, to city staff to explore when it's feasible and what works. But I just want to make that explicitly clear, that we need not limit ourselves to, to buses and shuttle program that are very costly.
And that's the, and that's where you all took this, right? You broaden this out, it, it, it's not just about shuttles, it's about transportation connectivity, broadly speaking. Okay, is there anything else on goal three? Do we need a break? We've been at it for two hours, a little over two hours, we have three more goals to go.
We can finish this goal out.
You want to keep going?
We'll finish goal three at least.
Well, yeah, I, I, are we done? I think we're done with goal three, or no?
There are two other items on.
Two other objectives.
Support, I'm, I'm, I'm on to objective four, support development of a city program for maintaining and cre, and increasing street light lighting.
Well, I, I would suggest keeping it, I think the maintaining part is submerging under the waterline somewhat. I'm looking to, to the city staff, but that's, and I'm grateful for that, that was a big lift. And it's happened now, you know, the street lights are being restored or have been restored. But we do have identified additional needs for more streetlights in our, I can't remember, streetlight guideline document. So I would suggest changing this to develop program to increase street lighting. Which is the next, the next.
Just take off the maintaining.
Basically, yeah.
Yeah.
The maintaining, yeah, is under the waterline, but the, the addition is, the addition, you know, takes planning funding as kind of a one shot. Right.
I think it needs to be, pardon the pun, highlighted.
Yeah. You know, shed some light on it, right? Okay.
Now it is time for a break.
We're good, we're good with a slight tweak there to objective four, objective five, reauthorization of Measure P1 to fund sidewalk repairs, consider including related infrastructure systems as appropriate.
Completed.
Completed, can we take it off the list? Oh, that's all, that's very satisfying. Okay, we are now done with goal three, do we need ten minutes? Or do we want to power through?
Is it right?
Maybe five.
Okay, five, let's do five minutes.
Five's good.
So we will, we'll reconvene at eighteen after.
Twenty after.
My daughter too.
Okay, moving on, we're on to Goal Number Four, encourage community connectivity through diversity, equity, and inclusivity. So from the earlier discussion, we'll go through each of the objectives. We did talk about adding traditional ecological knowledge under this item here. And let's see, was there another one? Oh, no, there wasn't another one. That was the one. We included the connectivity for disenfranchised members under the prior goal. So implement the racial equity survey. The project was not completed. I'm remembering back, there were some issues around that with your consultant. Does this come off the list?
I, from my perspective, we still need it. I don't know how we get there.
Well, then it would change to conduct. Implement.
So how far along did it? Was the survey completed, but it not distributed?
Kind of blew up on the launch pad, unfortunately.
Is there, does council want to go forward with this? That's the question.
I think it's very much valid to still consider having a racial equity survey in our community. It was much needed before, and I think it's still, it needed more than ever still after changing administration at the federal level. I would say that the the objective not being completed wasn't a reflection on anything on city staff's side. That we did get as far as having a consultant, having a survey that was ready, that was being distributed. It just, for reasons that we don't need to digress into this evening, it was halted. But I think there's still room for opportunity to capitalize on the energy that we had and maybe sustain that energy that people in the community were hoping to glean from that survey.
Okay, other thoughts?
Yeah, and I think it, you know, I think the previous contract was sort of the sports car. I mean, it had a lot in it, it wasn't just a survey. And so one possible lesson is do something simpler to get out of the gate, at least on it. That is actually part of the goal, but as part of this is, you know, providing thoughts to staff in that regard. And one aspect of this that I was particularly interested in is obviously the inward facing for the city, but also from what I've heard about the history of perceptions of Albany in the area, that was going to be a component, was surveying people who don't live in Albany, about Albany. I think that was an important perspective to get for a variety of reasons. I mean, one even is basic economic development. Some people said they basically wouldn't come here, at least at some points in time, so.
So it sounds like keep this on the list and start over for staff? Or have another view? Is there another view? Councilmember Mickey, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, Mayor.
You know, it's, I think it is an important thing to understand for our community, but it also, I mean, it raises question about whether or not it's something that really needs to be done in conjunction with AAUSD. Is there, you know, is there another? Because it's not, I mean, it's just not, not, as you said, Councilmember Jordan, it's not just about our residents, you know, so. And the other thing I would say is through the school district, there are already affinity groups. And so that's not inclusive of everyone, but there's already outreach into the community through that. And so this gets more to the implementation side, but maybe it's something about it needs to be not so much a city-led effort, but a combined effort or something to really understand the community. And that might, I'm not sure if that lightens the load on staff or it actually increases the load on staff. But I think one of the things that I would hope is that we can take advantage of all ways of getting the survey out there to the community. I think it should remain.
Okay, very good, Vice Mayor.
I think it should remain. But I think, and I think you have a good idea of broadening it. There's a piece missing in my head. I mean, if we said conduct a racial equity survey, that doesn't really say anything. So I think that would be really hard to figure out how we're going to do that. So that's the piece I'm trying to figure out is would it be better to say something like, and this is not what I'm thinking, but like, consider options for a racial equity survey? Something to, I think there was a step before we do the survey. And that's the piece I don't know quite how to explain. Does that sort of make sense?
Well, I guess also, I think you're you're on to something with here with also what are we going to do with the information that we gain? Or why specifically are we trying to attain this information? What is, what is our additional goals related to? I mean, okay, great, you do a survey. Oh, okay, now we, you know, isn't, but then what? Why? How?
I'm assuming that these questions were worked out the first iteration of this. I mean, you didn't have a consultant, they did put a survey together, so there must have been some sort of goal in mind.
Well, this was also done.
Or maybe not. I mean, just given the consultant and maybe they went sideways or took it in a direction that was not your direction.
Well, and the consultant, if I'm not correct, was chosen by a commission, correct?
It was more complicated than that.
It was a combo. The entire process was less than ideal, I'll just put it that way. I don't know that we really want to speak to history too much. And looking on how to move this forward going, you know, when we envisioned getting the results from the survey, which probably weren't going to be that effective based on how the survey was being implemented, I'll put that on the table. That was more at the staff level of concerns of how accurate is this information being produced? That is an issue, that's an ongoing issue. I want to be very clear on that. Surveys are not turnkey. Once we had that information, what the city, local government would do with it is something that we might not necessarily have tangible results for. Are we to modify the way we deploy services or projects or programs? Absolutely, we could do that if it dictated that that was an issue. Are we to have listening sessions and talk through issues? That's not something the city does alone. And so I just, I want to make sure that that remains, you know, on the table for consideration because this is an area that continuously could look like we've done nothing. And it's not because we don't care and we don't want to be a partner, it's because we do not have this department. And in a city our size, functionally, I don't have examples of cities our size with this type of staff group. So my question is, what does engagement with whomever we're framing in wanting to get information from look like? I don't know that it's a survey of questions on paper. Is that interactive? Is that informative? Does it tell the story of that experience? We've heard anecdotally through the initiation of the survey from some folks that were encouraged to take it, that a survey is not effective. Don't ask me to, and, you know, I'm simply responding to what we've heard. That's not conducive to how I want to see change in my community. So this one is, I understand and agree, it's a priority. It's obviously to the well-being of our community, how we get to a place where the city, with its limited resources, can do something productive is where I'm hesitant.
Would you have any specific recommendations, maybe? Or maybe not specific, but would you have recommendations of where you think the city could potentially?
I think that what we've been noodling on is opportunities to further groups represented in our community. I don't know what that looks like yet. It might be something that the council considers. The affinity groups are very specific to the school district and the students. So that's been an area that's under the school district. It doesn't mean that those parents couldn't necessarily be involved in other things. But again, we fall right back to the resources question. Who would do that work? Who would lead that initiative? On our team, we would be reassigning a person from what they're doing now to this work. And do they have the skill set or expertise to do it? Probably not. So I want to be sure that if we move this work forward, it's well-intentioned, obviously, but also with the resources needed to do it the right way. And I don't know that we had that the last time.
Just from listening to this, I agree. I don't think what you want, the survey's going to get you what you want. What comes to my mind are getting people together in focus groups, dialogue groups, something along those lines. And I'm not advocating this, did a project years and years ago. You have your affinity groups in the schools. If you could enlist them, give them a little bit of training, they go out in Kansas, interview people in the community. And then, and.
That would be in the mic.
I should stand over here, thank you, Ann. So, you know, that's a big project and it's, you know, it's very involved, but there's so many benefits to something like that. But I'm not here to advocate, you know, for something. But anyways, that would, in my mind, that would get you really valuable information as opposed to a survey.
So if we were to look at this and if it were, writing language on the dais and you know how much I love that. If we were to rephrase it something more to explore opportunities for racial equity engagement with partners, I mean, that's something that I think staff can do and can report back to on what are our opportunities to work with AAUSD more closely? Even if that's mostly on us as council, what is it, as Sean mentioned, opportunities to work with those affinity groups and the affinity groups that we know to have them help facilitate and expand kind of our reach into the community to hear back? And it's not necessarily in a survey, but it is more in a dialogue. And that may lead to questions that we need to survey the community about, very specifically on certain topics, but it's not a general survey that people kind of feel like, I fill out and what does this really do? And that seems, that seems like it could lead us to options on what are our steps going forward after that? As opposed to a survey, which we don't know what we're going to hear, we don't know what we can do with it. And so I would propose something like that in terms of language.
If I can add some insight to that, to continue that thought process, I think we may have an opportunity if the council would be willing to do a potential modification to the word inclusivity or some verbiage thereof. Recently, in meeting with the staff from the school district, I was reminded, or refreshed on the opportunity with the leadership groups within the high school, meaning our youth, who are also representative of a number of different, you know, all kinds of different students in our school population. And that's another opportunity in terms of inclusivity of the community overall. I think that there actually is an open door to have conversations with that group of leadership students and some others as well. So it might be an interesting, more here and now example of engagement.
Along those lines, I think both Mayor and I would suggest that we include the Y use in government as the use that we're reaching out to.
And if you keep it open-ended with that, I think we can also fold in the important information that you shared earlier about your meeting today. I mean, obviously, that's another important group to continue to have conversations and build with.
So it sounds like maybe the wording that Councilmember Mickey just shared could work here. Explore opportunities to engage the community around racial equity issues. And that leaves it broad enough where you have a lot of space to maneuver within that.
I would challenge us as a city to be a bit more assertive rather than just a core. I think that's kind of, that may be why our racial equity survey didn't yield what we wanted to begin with. Maybe we weren't as assertive as we needed to be in what exactly the clear expectations were and what we needed from a potential survey. in what exactly the clear expectations were and what we needed from a potential survey. And I'm, you know, and I, I'm, I am hearing and I'm mindful that, you know, sometimes when people take surveys, they don't really feel like they present much purpose. I think it really depends on the type of survey, the questions you're being asked. I'm very intentional about that, too. Like, there's some surveys I'll gladly take if it means my, I know my input is going to result in some type of action. There are others where I'm just like, you're not getting my information just to fulfill a checkbox. I'm leaning the spirit of perhaps changing the language on that first objective to allow us to expand, but also incorporate what we're hearing and maybe instead focus on this implementation of a community equity assessment so that we're not just focusing on race, but we're focused, we have, we could touch on age, gender, different abilities, legal status. I think, and this is something that I have, I've had issues with, that sometimes when we focus solely on race, we lose a lot of, we strip the individual of their identity, of different lived experiences and how other identities that they have that intersect with their race influence how they navigate this world or navigate in our city. But I think having some type of expert-led facilitated programming around community equity assessment where we have workshops, we have engagement, the whole nine yards, where then we can also have a full report on, okay, what works for our city, what doesn't work? What are some of the mobility issues for people with different abilities? What are concerns of people of different age groups? I know I, you know, I'm, I'm an advocate for parks and how do people from toddlers to senior citizens be able to equally use the same space? I think these are questions that we could find answers to and find directives on how to address that if we had maybe something like a community equity assessment. Where we're taking into account the lived experiences of very diverse identities and aspects of people's everyday lives and how they navigate our streets, how they navigate our parks, how they navigate our schools, our city resources and so forth.
Conduct a community equity assessment instead of implement the racial equity survey. And again, broad leaves you flexibility, could look like this, could look like that, could take another form or shape. How's that sound for council?
Would that be a consultant would do that or, I mean, it sounds like quite formal thing.
Yeah, I think we would, we would likely need to lean on a consultant for this because I, I definitely don't want to take away from the, the work that city staff is doing. I, you know, we have, city staff is, you know, consistently working on core services for our city. And if we try to put someone in a, in a space where maybe they might be uncomfortable or like, they like the, they like it, but then they know that maybe they're not an expert, expert in that realm, thing could fail really quick. Just like, you know, there may be someone who really likes science, but if you put him in the wrong lab, you may end up with the fish with three eyes and four legs. So, yeah, I, I would say in short, yeah, I think this is definitely something that we require a consultant. I think we learned a lot from our first go-around with this. So maybe city staff can also ensure, like, we have appropriate guardrails if necessary, if there is an RFP that goes out.
Yeah, I, I'll just voice one concern in that. Agree with all the directions they're going. I, I would ask if we could consider implementing community engagement and assessment because assessment to me is just replacing survey. In one sense, like, assessment seems like a thing, a very individual, specific thing, just like the survey was. And what I was trying to do was broaden, right? So that maybe the consultant would come back says it's, you shouldn't come up with an assessment. It is a series of engagement things that should become integral to what we as a community do. And so like, I, I would just ask that we, I, I felt like we're just changing out words from racial to community, survey to assessment. And it may lead us down the same path of an individual task that may or may not be possible versus widening it a little bit to engagement and assessment allows us a multitude of things that we could try and do under that.
To add to that and to refresh on some things currently underway, perhaps indirectly, but absolutely correlated, a number of our planning processes underway, including an act of transportation plan. Do some of this equity assessment work? Also, Isabella has some additional detail on AARP analysis.
Yeah, so staff has begun the work of the ARP Aging in Place Plan, which is a five-year plan which addresses equity for aging in, in the city. So that's also another plan that we're working on.
So retaining a consultant means staff is actively managing that consultant. And in this regard, probably in, right in step with them and not necessarily conducting the work, but facilitating all of the engagement with a number of different staff because they would need to understand organizationally and go through quite a few project assessments, whatnot. So I don't know that this necessarily saves any allocation of staff time, but does likely initiate a pretty substantive project to which I'm not sure we currently have financial resources that could be allocated without some shifting of where our funds are going.
Yeah, and I worry, given the previous experience and I raised the, the city manager an email after the consultant that was contracted didn't work out. What about the approaching the second level consultant, choice consultant, second ranking consultant? And if I remember correctly, you said you had heard some issues from other cities that engaged that consultant. So I kind of worry that there isn't actually a sufficiently robust consulting world in this to want to take another run and trying to contract a consultant for it. But I am interested in the engagement idea as a sort of a more ongoing. But if it's not consultant, then it would either be us or staff or some combination thereof, so.
That's where something out there that I, is not what the mayor was leaning towards. But wondering if staff is doing different equity engagements. And so what we're really saying is continue to do that, but we need to do more. One option in a survey slash assessment, instead of asking the public kind of where people stand today, is, is are the consultants that are actually coming in assess what is staff doing? And what could staff be doing more to make sure that we're doing this engagement and, and, and having opportunities? And that, that would be an approach that flips it from understanding what the public is seeing to saying, what, what are other communities doing that our staff could be doing more of? Right? And that, that doesn't put the onus on staff yet of having to implement that, but it does bring it back to us to help us figure out how do we fund that? How do we properly staff, staff that so that those things can happen? The, the, and the reason why I, I'm a little cautious about everywhere I'm going with this is that it, we're not engaging. I guess that's why we would keep the engagement part, because I think we need to continue as council members and as staff through our projects to engage community members in different ways. But we're not going to get this assessment or survey with the change in language that I'm, I'm saying. Sorry, I raise this partially because of what you said, Councilmember Jordan, that there, there may not be this robust group of consultants in which they can do this very hard task. It is absolutely the kind of task that ends up having to be tailored to every community. And every community is different, so.
Well, and, you know, I'd also like to just throw out there that, you know, rather than, I mean, I, do I say this right? I'm not going to say it right. There's one part of identifying needs and identifying differences and identifying challenges of different people throughout our community and beyond. Ultimately, I feel like the big goal would be to all, not just identify people and identify challenges, but the collaboration of working together and bridging those gaps and bringing people together rather than further dividing people out. So I'd like to focus more on collaborative events, things that would be supportive and engaging and nurturing people. And I think that we do that in our community pretty well now. But I think that we could maybe throw another emphasis on it. Maybe that would be more of an identified collaboration day or, or something of that sorts. And maybe that's where we could bring different groups together to really get a better understanding of where they feel like there might be lacking in what their needs are. And it might be needs that the city can provide or it might be needs that others within the county or other areas that can help provide, kind of like the resource fair that we already have here. When we do the resource fair, it's primarily more geared, I think, a lot of times towards seniors. But maybe there could be some sort of an event that would be geared more towards social equity and justice, just a thought.
I sort of feel like we're trying to build a plane and fly it at the same time, or however that phrase goes. And I wonder if we'd be better served to have, and I know it'd be kind of a bland statement, but something exploring some opportunities to bring our, I don't, this isn't what I mean, but start with this, like, to bring our community together. So we're not talking about specifically meeting with affinity groups or specifically meeting with the youth or whatever, but we're just kind of an overarching explore ways to bring our community together. And how, how we exactly phrase that, I'm not quite sure. And then from there, we go to a little bit more of, okay, so what are we trying to do and how are we going to do it? And we kind of work that out as part of the objective rather than trying to figure that out tonight because there's just a million things we could do and I, I don't know that we can get it into a sentence.
And, and so I, I come back to the question. When you were doing the racial equity survey, what did you, what was the expectation? What were you expecting to get out of that? Recommendations for how the city can be better serve? The diverse population, be inclusive? Okay, so to the vice mayor's point then, is the objective to engage the community around how to be more inclusive, welcoming, serving your diverse population. And that could take lots of different forms, but the, the work would be what are those processes, engagements, opportunities? Does that make sense? Does that work?
You know, if, to kind of give a little history, I think this, this came out in 2020 while we were in the middle of COVID. This is where it began. It sort of dragged on for a long time. We were in the middle of COVID. It was right after the George Floyd murder. There was a lot of reasonable and correct concern. We're in a different place now. We still have a lot of concerns, but I think they're a little different than they were when we looked at it originally, now five years ago. So it's, it, it might be, we need to take approaches a little differently. We're not where we were then.
Yeah. And to the mayor's point, not just focusing on the racial.
Right.
So are you okay with a, we can wordsmith this, an objective about engaging, increasing engagement with the community around issues of equity, inclusivity, something, language, something to that effect? Does that work?
Yeah.
It could be a community event, it could be working with the affinity, it could be all of the above?
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, I think if we frame it as enhancing equitable, community engagement and connectedness, I think that helps capture what we're trying to accomplish. And still leaves it broad enough for city staff to continue to do what they do, but maybe find creative ways to scale, scale the work up or move, move out horizontally. There's certainly a lot of room for opportunity for different types of events and programming. But I think sometimes it just requires a little gentle nudge of like, hey, we would like to see this or see that. It'd be lovely to see a pride event, a diversity event. It'd also be lovely to see events that are focused for just, you know, maybe toddlers or, you know, or infants or folks of varying abilities who don't get to enjoy the part the same way we do. So I think, and I say that because what I'm hearing over here is that there's already a lot of solid equity, equitable work that city staff is doing. And I don't think we need to charge them to have someone else reinvent the wheel if they're doing the work. But I think if city staff feels it necessary or important to then bring a consultant, then we'll cross that bridge when we need to. But it sounds like we don't need to, one, engage that right now, but two, we don't need to entertain the idea of, you know, what do we do with taxpayer money? And not, not entirely certain how we're going to utilize it. Because I think that was one of the things that came up with the racial equity survey.
I think we have an opportunity to come, potentially remove the first item, combine the concepts the mayor just shared in the second item. And it doesn't necessarily, it's interesting that it says residents, probably community members. And capture some of that language we just heard. And I don't want to necessarily paraphrase it because I won't do it well. But I think that that could expand to the concepts that we've just discussed. If that sounds like a workable solution, because it's all one and the same. It's what the city does, not what the city tries to navigate above it. And I think that that's really paramount for effectiveness if you want to see progress at the city level with this type of work.
So maybe objective two, enhance program services and engagement with community members on issues of equity and inclusivity. And that does capture what you were talking about for objective one, and then it broadens out objective two. Does that work for council? Okay, let's go with it.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Actually, that was, I think tying that objective one and two together makes a lot of sense. Okay, so if we're good, we've got, we combined one and two, modified the language. Objective three, increase accessibility and enhance communication to residents on city resources and information.
I wonder if that isn't below the waterline.
Yeah, I would think so.
Staff is doing that continuously.
Yeah, we want to continue doing it and, and, but it's very diff, you know, and I still have people in the community that'll sit there and say, oh, I didn't know about it. Well, you know, I mean, I could, I could blind to it too, but there's a lot of stuff going on to pay attention to out there. So, yeah, I would, I would knock this off the list.
I wonder, the, the website, when will it go live?
We're hoping the next, the second quarter of 2025, so very soon.
Okay, very good. I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off.
No, it's fine. I'm, I guess we're all, maybe we're not all, maybe, I'm just a little hesitant. We hear repeatedly how we don't communicate. But I am wondering if we could combine three and four. But I am wondering if we could combine three and four, sort of with a focus on the enrollment and the tax exemptions and rebates. Certainly that has, the people that are applying has certainly increased, and I think due to a highlighting of it, but perhaps that could somehow come together in one, one goal.
And to speak directly to that, the fourth objective, that is absolutely ongoing in terms of the communication to promote that program. We have in-person assistance. I don't know how much more we could do with regard to encouraging participation.
Right. I understand that, I just, it's one of those ones that I think that I want to highlight that we're doing this, and that kind of is what brings it above the waterline. I mean, you know, both of those could go below the waterline too, but.
Yeah, I wondered, you know, four to me is a subset of three. What I like about keeping three on the list is that it's an opportunity for us, for the city, to kind of tout all the ways that we are trying to continue to engage people because people have so many things pulling at them. And, you know, Councilmember Jordan, you mentioned a moment ago about the street tree program, and it's like, that's another program where it's like, we can continue to tell people when they buy a house, when street work is done on their street, that they can get a free street tree. And yet you will talk to people and they will still tell you, oh, I had no idea that I could get a free street tree, right? I think there's always this need to continuously promote the city in many ways and the programs that we do. And so I think it, to me, it's helpful to be able to see the list of, here are all the things that the city's done in the last two years. You may not have heard about this, but this is the amount of additional engagement that has occurred because the number of times as a transportation commissioner, or when I've attended city council meetings or planning commission meetings in other communities where it was, I had no idea this was going on. And then, and that's, the reality is no matter what the city does, there's always going to be people that don't hear about it, right? Or they missed the flyer that got to their house. And so I'm not asking this necessarily to be more work on the staff, but it is the kind of thing where like, we need to continue to keep, I would like us to continue thinking about other ways of engaging people, other ways of reporting back, just what have we heard? And so I, so.
If there's a way to combine it or something, yeah, I'm envisioning our, you know, staff starting to do, you know, social media videos. Have we done that?
Do we have a TikTok channel? Not that I know how to use TikTok. I didn't say that.
You know, the other thing is, we never used to send out postcards, and we started sending them out once in a while, and now we send them out more often, not daily, but I think there were three or four this year. And they're now going to the 94707s, which didn't used to happen. And the activity guide now goes to 94707. So that's something that's been increased. It's, you know, it's just another thing that we're doing. So I think leaving this in here is good, and we're grateful to get those in the 94707s, all 37 of us or whatever.
On the communication issue, and I'm just nodding my head as you're all, I didn't hear about that. Wait, wait, hold on. You're always going to get that. You're never going to get, I think there's this view, oh, we'll just have the perfect communication, everybody will be informed and updated, it's not going to happen. What I'm hearing here is keep three, does four come off the list? I heard Nicole say that this is ongoing, and this is just now is, that moved below the waterline. Did four move below the waterline? And that three, you could move it below the waterline, but there might be good reason to keep it up there so it's visible.
Yeah, I, I thought of four as being a subset of three, and we were just explicitly saying this is, of all the services the city provides, that was one of the high priorities.
Thoughts about that, that we incorporate four into three? It's obviously one of the things that the community, the city educates and informs the community about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm medevaced, I'm a little, I'm a little cautious because I would estimate that only about 30% of the households that are eligible are, are received relief, applied and received relief, or are going to receive relief this fiscal year, which is incredible. I mean, that's almost double from two years ago, so I definitely want to recognize that with staff. It's an incredible increase, but there's still a long ways to go. But I do appreciate what city managers said, that this effort's been going on a while, and it's doubled and doubled again and almost doubled again. So it probably is operationalized now. So I think leaving it off for these two years and the date is posted, so we can see if it continues to increase without this high-level focus on it.
So the wording around three would stay the same, but staff would know that underneath three, we're going to continue to the tax exemption rebates would be one of the many, many things that you're communicating out. Does that work for council? Okay, so you now have two objectives.
So I have another one to suggest, which is many, most of the property taxes now have an exemption or rebate for very low-income households. The last property tax measure, we added for the first time a half exemption rebate for low-income households. And I think we should make a goal of retrofitting those provisions into all our property taxes for equity sake. And there's actually a tie to a goal, and that could work synergistically with a goal I'll bring up in number five, and goal, an objective I'll bring up under goal five.
Okay. So one more time with the wording?
So it would be add, add full and partial exemptions slash rebates for very low and low-income households to all existing property taxes.
If we had, if we were to do that, we'd have to put them all back on the ballot, is that correct?
Yes.
I would be really.
A lot of them already have it.
Right, well, but the ones that we would be changing.
Yeah.
I would be really hesitant to be putting things on the ballot like that. I would rather be putting a tax on the ballot than something we need now rather than, I'd be afraid if, if it didn't pass, we lose all the revenue.
No, you would structure it so if it doesn't pass, then it just continues the way it is. So people have the option of voting for equity or not. Under goal five, the synergy is that unsecured property, which is the, the private companies that lease property from U C, currently, we don't have the language in most of our property taxes to tax them. And so Belmont Village, Sprouts, American Campus Communities, which is the new building, they're not paying all these property taxes. And so we need to reauthorize, or I would suggest we have an objective of reauthorizing our property tax measures to add, and I think it's literally one sentence, to those property tax measures so that we can collect that revenue.
So you're not.
Two reasons to.
I'm sorry, interrupting you.
So we have two reasons to put, put a suite of property tax measures, reauthorizations of property tax measures on the ballot. We can say to the voters, if you vote for this, the city will receive more revenue at no additional tax burden upon you. We are simply missing out on revenue that entities should be paying.
Are you also referring to single-family homes or any other property taxes?
So it'd be taking our existing property taxes, and the city attorney's informed that there's literally a missing sentence or a provision that would be one sentence or so, that if we had that in there, we could then tell the tax collector, collect taxes on these private entities that exist on U C property.
But are, are you talking about other properties also, or just the one?
So we'd leave, we'd leave it the same to the other property.
Okay, because that wasn't the original thought, I suppose.
Yeah, so it'd be just, put the existing language on the ballot with the amendment to the ordinance of this, you know, one line and then the exemption rebates.
I want to clarify before we get too far on, on really chiseling that in stone. Our city attorney's offices were reviewing the current language in our existing ordinances to see if there is alternative language pre-existing that enables us to already initiate on the leased property. So I think that it would be important to see that through before we necessarily commit to ballot measures to add that possessory interest language in case we already have it in a different way. And we should have that soon, but not immediate. Takes a while to analyze.
So it could be consider then, rather than do.
And it'll affect it one way or the other.
Could we put that in the parking lot area too, or?
I wouldn't parking lot it because we need the revenue.
Oh, I know we need the revenue, but I also just want to make sure. Be eight or one?
Could, I'm sorry, could it be what?
Number one, identify funding mechanisms, exploration of various revenue generating streams. I mean, it sounds like that's what it is.
Yeah, although I would like to be more specific than that because I was pretty shocked when I came on council and learned that, that for all the processing around Belmont Village and all the revenue projections, that they never happened because we didn't have the right taxing instruments. So if we're talking, it's, I would estimate it's around $500,000 to $600,000 a year that we're missing. And, you know, this is something that councils didn't recognize before I showed up and started asking questions, and I don't want it to continue year after year after year the way it's continued. So that's why I really want to highlight it and focus on it and get it done.
The way it's framed is, for time purposes, the way it's framed by Councilmember Jordan is perfectly acceptable, and the work's already underway. So if we do need to modernize the ballot language, staff is already prepared to synthesize that and move it forwards for council consideration. If the language is pre-existing, then we'll work towards applying and calculating what those bills look like for the respective parcels and properties.
Okay, does that work for council?
So maybe going back to goal four, the objective would be, you know, consider adding full and partial exemptions, rebates.
Yeah.
To property taxes for very low and low-income households.
Nicole Isabelle, you've, good?
Yep.
In terms of capturing that? And council, sounds like you're comfortable with that? And that gives you three objectives for goal four? Okay, if there's nothing else, we can move on to goal number five, increase revenues to sustain city services, and you've got another healthy goal here with six objectives, identifying funding mechanisms to further stabilize the general fund through new revenue generating, revenue generating streams. And I'm assuming that the goal stays here. You sort of need this to fund everything else, right? Maybe this is goal number one, if they were in priority order. But what about that objective one?
Stays from my perspective.
Are we good, as is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Identifying funding and strategies to manage unfunded pension liabilities.
And I think you said that that's well in your way, so we could probably remove that now? Has that gone below the?
No, 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 I think it's definitely needed. I mean, we need to see it through to actually having a plan that's adopted, I would say. I mean, it's not a maintenance kind of thing, it's like a one-time.
And it looks like it'll just be coming to the sub, standing subcommittee in April, which is when this strategic plan would be implemented. And so that means if it wouldn't come to council, May, June, with recommendations from the committee, so there would still be work.
And.
And then there's the implementation of whatever is.
Implementation part.
Yeah.
Okay.
So two will stay on, and, you know, two years from now, done, complete, it comes off the list. Seeking, number three, seeking funding partnerships with outside agencies.
I would suggest we've done what we can do there, probably. I can't think of other agencies to, to go after.
Removing that one?
That would be my suggestion.
Removing objective three.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, a lot of staff knows of some untapped agencies out there that we need to approach.
It's another example of something we would do anyway, if there an opportunity were to arrive, or come, sorry, to come to our, yeah, we would do it anyway.
So below the waterline, it's already happening, it's just part of every, you know, staff's normal, normal workload. Develop options to restructure the business license tax.
You said this will be coming to us.
Yes, we're at the preliminary stages of looking at how to approach this, so work is underway.
And that might turn into a ballot measure potentially?
Yeah.
So we'll leave that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Update development impact fees.
Yeah.
That's got to stay on.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it hasn't been done since 2008, so it's a one-time, you know, infrequent, which makes it, to me, a strategic plan item.
Absolutely. And assess potential opportunities to utilize newer technology for parking enforcement.
We tried that, but then we bought the gas-powered one.
Well, yeah, so maybe, maybe.
Just kidding. Right, you're telling me. Yeah, I would change the language, explore potential opportunities for improving technology to support public safety.
Well, so the specific motivation for this was I am aware of the owner of a particular vehicle who parks their vehicle on Solano all day long, every day, and goes out and erases the chalk marks. And you can see it on Google Street View, that vehicle is there in every squeak, every Google Street View going back years and years. And so what was behind this was switching from this, you know, chalk approach to license plate readers, which a lot of cities have done, which will probably have some ergonomic benefit as well. So in essence, the, the parking on Solano is not being managed for turnover and for patronage, you know, as efficiently as it could be.
But if you made it broader, just to support public, public safety, comes down to public safety department, I mean, I think it would still work.
But I don't, I don't see parking enforcement as a public safety issue. I mean, it's, yes, it's in the public safety domain, but it itself is not a public safety item. If that, that person parking all day long on Solano Avenue isn't causing any public safety problems.
We should just charge them the cost of a parklet then.
Yeah. There we go, I like it.
And the, and the public safety piece probably fits better under your goal six anyways.
Yeah.
We could slightly change the language, so taking out parking enforcement, not using public safety, but say assess, assess potential opportunity to utilize newer technology for, for city efficiency, city official efficiency, because it sounds like that's what one of the issues was with parking enforcement, it just wasn't efficient. And I think that's broad enough where we can cover public safety, we can cover other things with, with fire department, with anything that city staff may need to be a bit more efficient.
Yeah, though I worry that's so broad as to be, staff doesn't know, you know, what is it that we're asking for?
Specifically to the item as currently listed, the challenge, which will be a challenge, given how important parking is to many. It affects, and I'm getting into the weeds here, but to help the conversation, it affects block-by-block parking, so we would need to modify our 90-minute to block-by-block, which is a different approach to enforcement, and so that's been really hard for a police department our size to navigate as of yet. So yes, license plate readers could be very helpful and effective with regard to parking enforcement versus the chalking method, but there will be some necessary changes operationally and to the street itself in terms of parking limits and what that means, meaning you could park for 90 minutes on one block, and then you'd have to move. I'm not explaining it entirely, but I know that it will require a good chunk of work to make some modifications, so I don't know how immediate this one will actually happen.
Yeah, and I.
If prioritized.
To build off of city manager's comments, I mean, I think, to me, we're, we are going to be, we are looking at Solano Avenue, we will be looking at Solano Avenue, active transportation plan will come up with a proposal. That proposal at some point will get more engineered than the actual transportation plan will take it. And at that time, I think there are going to be a lot of questions that we need to ask ourselves, whether or not, do we need technology that's helping us make sure that turnover on the parking space is happening? do we need technology that's helping us make sure that turnover on the parking space is happening so that businesses feel like there's parking spaces? Do we need parking meters, right? Like, I think there are all kinds of opportunities and questions that come up when you are looking at redoing Solano Avenue for so many blocks. Um, and that seems like an appropriate time to, in which to look at, is this block ninety minutes? Is this block sixty minutes? Where are we doing loading? Where are we having, you know, look, you know, loading and unloading is for get, you know, for, for, um, Grubhub or whatever it is, right? Like, um, I think there's, but that is, that is down the road when we get back kind of the direction that Solano Avenue is going and we get more engineering drawings.
Yeah, I agree. That's a way bigger conversation because, you know, I know, you know, even just like with the ninety minute parking, you also have to remember what a broad range of businesses that we have in, on Solano Avenue. So somebody may come and spend ninety minutes getting their hair done and then turn around and also go to the Five Little Monkeys store and hang out for another ninety minutes or whatever the case might be. So they could potentially be within that general area in multiple shopping stores doing their business and move from place to place. So, and just so you know, all the businesses on, I won't say all, but majority of the businesses on Solano Avenue that I've spoken to do not want parking here, but. So could we take off this, this item?
Please. I've been convinced.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, it, it looks like there's agreement that, uh, objective six comes off the list.
Okay, and then I think we brought forward previously, but, um, adjust property taxes and fees so they can each be levied on the unsecured property. Or it could be levy property taxes and fees on unsecured property. I don't know. Our staff wants that to be formulated just so that we get it done over the next two years.
Nicole?
What?
Do you have direction there?
Yeah.
So unsecured property is property, um, like Bubon Village is unsecured property refers to.
Oh, okay. I was, I was, I used to have a boat, so I remember getting an unsecured property tax. And I'm like, well, we don't allow trailers and boats and stuff because, yeah, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so with the addition of that one, you've reduced your list down to five objectives under goal number five. Okay, if we're good there, we can move on to the last goal on public safety. Pages here. Increase public health, safety and resiliency, and I'm going to assume that stays on the list as a goal. Identify resources and options to enhance code enforcement programs.
And I think you said you were working on this, but this is probably something that still should remain.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
I continue preparation efforts and community engagement regarding disaster preparedness.
Again, another thing that we've got CERT going, but probably could continue, could continue on here.
Length CERT is under objective three. So there's, there's, you know, get some ambiguity between those two. I think CERT's under the, the waterline though, so I was thinking of taking out objective three.
I think, yeah, we could take out three, but I think we should change to then to read continue preparation and training efforts.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you combined two and three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Continue preparation efforts and, uh, community engagement and training regarding disaster preparedness.
Perfect.
And then three comes off.
Well, so what, what is the action there other than CERT? Because like I say, CERT is, to me, that's under the waterline. I mean, it's, it's just happening now.
But there's still training, there's staff training, there's continued training because there's new.
Is that, is that under the water? So I, I think of like block parties, you can have the fire, fire department to come out. If you don't pay the block party fee for closing the street, you have the fire department come out and talk to the community about preparedness. But that to me is like under, under the water. I mean, it is done routinely at this point.
It's an essential core service for the city to be prepared in the case of an emergency. Well, so we will absolutely be and are doing this either way. It's again, it's whether the council finds it of paramount to speak to it in, in this particular format.
So essentially you're saying that we could probably take both of these off, two and three?
We will be doing them irregardless, but it, it just really depends on the council. It's an essential city service.
So I had an idea of something that is more, more focused and perhaps could get going over the next two years and staff, I'm sure is thinking about it. To convert these over to focusing on what is the city doing around the risk of urban firestorms? Like just happened in Los Angeles. Um, and so I imagine there's going to be a lot to learn from that and a lot of thinking in the profession about how to both reduce that risk and how to respond to such things when they occur. And, uh, and we're certainly subject to it. I mean, we are as, as close to an open space as many parts of Altadena, Pacific Palisades that burned up. I mean, I overlaid the Palisades fire on our area and it's basically from, you know, San Pablo Reservoir to the Bay, including all of Albany, all of El Cerrito, almost all of Berkeley and most of Richmond.
Different total water system than us as well and.
Uh, I wouldn't.
More palm trees and.
I wouldn't, I mean, I grew up down there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that at all. I mean, they had, they have an urban wa- firefighting system, which, you know, if you, what's reported in the news is, is designed to fight a few structured fires at once. It's not designed to supply water to fight, uh, urban firestorm. And so it just wasn't engineered for that. And I mean, our, our firefighting system isn't designed to, to fight and suppress blocks and blocks of fire at one time. It would also probably go to zero pressure and we'd have the same, same issues. So I just, I, I feel pretty strongly that that's something that the city needs to, to think about over the next two to four years. You know, what, how does it deal with that? Uh, because that's a, that's a whole, like a whole new reality that was not contemplated in our current, um, emergency response plans. I mean, it's, it's a step change in how the climate works.
But doesn't that come under disaster preparedness?
I would say disaster preparedness and response. It's not just preparing for the disaster, it's how do you respond to the disaster once it's happened?
Right. And the reason I'm suggesting not having the generic is because we already have an emergency response plan that covers and staff trains to that, and that's under the waterline. This is something new. This is a massive change in how our state works now.
So just to make sure, you're, you're proposing removing two and three and replacing it with one that is more specifically regarding wildfires?
But doesn't the fire department, I mean, the state laws are changing and just got the map and the whole thing. Aren't they still attuned to all that? So it's, again, it's already being done.
It's absolutely underway and this is a very large engagement across multiple levels of government and respective agencies. So if we're looking for, again, I, I keep pointing to what does success look like with regard to this one, it would simply be that we continue to partner and work at that regional and larger scale in terms of preparedness and response for that type of disastrous situation. If you're looking for something specific to Albany, then we're talking about, um, looking at opportunities for enhanced fire prevention measures and, um, resiliency in that regard. So there are potentially doable things. I understand the paramount importance of this. I think we all experienced that indirectly or some directly. If we're keeping disaster preparedness with regard to wildfire, I think it should continue to be also broadly stated because there are other issues like the tsunami warning that we were ill-prepared for. And so I wouldn't want us to necessarily pigeonhole it. We obviously are aware of this and it is amongst many different, you know, agencies and management levels of discussion. And I see that it's going to take a lot of work to get everybody to the table.
Yeah, maybe to, to, um, give a specific example, building off of, um, what you just said, city manager. Uh, so when I, you know, watched this event and was thinking about it and reading about it, ideas like, uh, a property tax to, that would, that would provide funding for owners of buildings in the eastern four blocks of the city, for instance, to screen their gutters. That's one of the major ways that structures catch on fire is embers land in the debris in the gutters and light those things on fire and then the whole structure lights on fire. And so if, to the extent that this fire is going to come from the east and, um, those property owners are willing to take advantage of financing from the whole city that helps the whole city, you know, we can create, uh, a harder fire break, standing fire break in a sense. And so that's very Albany specific. Now, I'm not saying we would do that, but those are the kinds of things that we, we think about. And I just, I just think this is a tremendous risk that has developed over the last ten to fifteen years. It didn't exist before. Um, and so we can't, you know, continue to do the same thing and expect a different result.
Can we add to bullet two? At the end of the sentence, after preparedness and response, including but not limited to urban firestorms? Is that sufficient?
Be good, yeah.
It carries the interest forward, also incorporates it into our overall disaster preparedness. And I know that work is already being done on this, uh, across the community development department and fire department with regard to potential code updates that would be considered by the council. So there is that local action item.
Great. Thank you.
Limited, uh, but not limited to urban wildfire. Was there one other word?
Urban firestorms, I think that's what you said.
Firestorm, yeah, got it. Okay, so objective two reads, continue preparation efforts and community engagement regarding disaster preparedness and response, comma, including but not limited to urban firestorms.
Were we going to add training in there?
I have that.
Do we want?
After engagement.
Yeah, boy, okay, so we will put a training in there. Good, because that, then that encapsulates staff and the community. Because as, um, uh, it reads right now, number two is just for the community and number three is for staff. And so now you've combined those two.
Yep.
Three comes off the list. Four, adopt mandatory seismic retrofit ordinance.
I mean, as, as stated, it can come off.
Yeah. I suggest adding implement Albany Hill Forest Management Habitat Restoration Plan as an objective. So that's a plan that's going to be coming to council and that will not be the end. In some ways, that will be the midpoint or the beginning of implementation of actually doing something on Albany Hill.
Okay, so four is coming off and, uh, recommendation on the table, one more time with the word please?
Implement Albany Hill Forest Management and Habitat Restoration Plan.
Council thoughts, reactions? Good with it? I'm seeing nods around the table. Good with it? Okay, so then that, um, works with four objectives under, um, goal number six.
Sean, can I ask, I'm going to apologize because I'm backing up to housing.
Yes.
Before we conclude. Can I ask council if, if they would consider moving, explore the funding opportunities for acquisition of available open space? Either to revenue or to, um, first one, climate adaptation? It has always seemed odd to me that that is under housing. It has nothing to do with housing. It is a revenue one, so that's why I thought it could be under revenue or it could be under climate adaptation.
Yeah, I mean, it's really touches on so many things. I mean, it could, it could be under increased public health, safety and resiliency as well.
Yeah. I'm okay with any of those, but I
Yeah, not.
It does not make sense to me under housing.
Yeah. Because what I have in mind is that eleven acre parcel, which has caught on fire twice the time I've been in office.
Do you have a preference on where it, where it ends?
I, public health is fine.
Okay.
That's the one council member Jordan recommended.
I'm seeing nods around the table and that gives you five objectives under goal six, uh, uh, safety. Nicole Isabel, you, um, captured that?
Yep.
Good, good. Um, anything outstanding on your end in terms of notes? Need clarification?
Yeah.
Anything else before we start wrapping up?
Oh, yeah. Do we have an opportunity to add? I have, I guess there's, there are three additional goals that can possibly heard that it's grown over here, um, which can be melded into others, but I pulled them, I have them separate because that's how I thought about them. Actually, I have four. One was, and this, it's came from our meeting this morning and certainly I look to you for some, some guidance of how we partner and how we call out our partnership with the Aloney people or the Aloney tribe, I guess.
I think they, um, actually had notes around that. Thank you for bringing it back up, but I think we could capture that pretty well by, um, perhaps having language in there around promoting, uh, promote enhanced visibility of indigenous history and culture. That can include perhaps even revisiting our land acknowledgement, make sure that it's more actionable and so forth.
And maybe we add that to four as another. Okay.
What's the wording, please?
Okay, well, let, yeah, let's just take one at a, let's just take one at a time.
Can you read that again, Robin? Can you read that again?
Yeah, uh, promote enhanced visibility of indigenous history and culture. I'll leave it at that, leave it broad for now.
And, um, a potential objective under goal four, your community connectivity through diversity.
Right.
Okay, so let's just pause there. So how does that sound for council? This would be the, um, a new objective, objective number four under goal four.
So I know that, uh, that's a bit different, but do we caption the engagement with indigenous, um, people in a different goal under a goal four? Because I mean, a different objective under goal four, because I remember we talked about that.
Oh, oh, yes.
If you could refresh on that? If you had the language.
Yeah, um, it was a traditional ecological knowledge.
Okay, but so we didn't actually, did we actually adjust any of the adjustments to include that?
No, I don't think.
Okay, okay.
No.
So I wonder if this, what you just suggested.
Fold that, fold that together.
That they should be folded together, if they could be folded together. I, I don't know, but what you're suggesting is more seems like it's facing towards non-indigenous people in terms of raising awareness.
Um, I think for here, um, what I'm thinking is more better intentional relationship with indigenous people and the hope that it promotes enhanced visibility. So perhaps we can have, um, language in there or, um, promoting our, uh, more intentional relationship to promote enhanced visibility, et cetera, et cetera.
So just one more time, so we can hear that and then get, uh, responses to it.
What did I just say?
I have it if helpful. I have it if helpful. Do you want me to repeat it? I have it if it's helpful to you, okay? More intentional relationships to promote enhanced visibility of indigenous history and culture.
Thoughts? And that would, I think you could add the ecological knowledge, traditional ecolo- ecological knowledge underneath that. I mean, that's part of the engagement.
Yeah, I think that, that goes hand in hand with what I said earlier, though, that sometimes tribes, uh, they, they're particular about what they share.
Yeah.
So I think that, I think it's safe to keep it broad right now.
Okay.
So that we understand when there is more or better intentional relationship with them, we understand what their expectations are of us.
Right. So thoughts about adding that objective to goal number four? Thoughts about that from staff's perspective?
It is, um, correlated but different than the goal two that we reworked. So it's, works perfectly fine to have it more clarified for this particular group of people.
Good, excellent. Okay, so, uh, new objective for goal four, uh, next one, Vice Mayor.
Okay, um, I think this is a new goal, although perhaps you could get, move it in somewhere else. Promote business vitality and advance economic development. Promote business vitality and advance economic development. Look for innovative ways to promote economic development by engaging with prospective businesses and existing businesses.
Is this something that we're kind of already working on, right?
We've. Yes.
This was something that we talked about before. And, um, Brendan and, and Isabel, you was, you guys have been working on this. I mean, I think that there, we have some further opportunities, but I don't know where you guys are at with that.
We typically do a, an annual, um, presentation to council on economic development efforts.
Yeah, I think this is below the water line. My experience, which is.
Well, I think what we recently heard, um, perhaps in talking to other businesses, I heard it again, was a feeling that the city isn't engaging with the businesses, so maybe it needs to be more highlighted. And perhaps not, I don't, you know, we, we don't want a million different goals, so.
Uh, and that could go under your, uh, communication out to the, uh, community?
Actually, well, I was.
What are you doing with economic development?
I mean, I was thinking that maybe, maybe this could go under, uh, goal five of the increased revenue.
Absolutely.
No, because that is, you know, the more, and I heard this today too. Oh, I'd love to have, you know, the businesses of such and such, you know, Bear, whatever else, kind of like that, you know, in Emeryville. And, and we do have limited opportunity for that just because of the size of our property parcels and whatnot. But yet we could continue to like look for opportunities to engage in that. And also that, you know, what happens with Golden Gate Fields could also potentially be part of that as well, so. And I do, I do still hear from some businesses that they feel like, even though they have a communication going with the city, that they still feel like what they're asking for is falling on deaf ears. So I'm not sure exactly what to do about that. I know that we've stepped up thing. I, I think there, again, like I said, there's still work to be done. I know you'll have a presentation. And then also just understanding too with the businesses of like what they really want and, and what will help them along, um, in order to make additional revenue for the city. And what could potentially choke them and finish their business, so.
So the question for council is, um, it, it seems like if you want to include this, it fits nicely as an objective under your, um, increased revenue goal. But the question is, does it belong in the strategic plan or is somebody mentioned, is it below the water line?
Yeah, I just don't know what more staff would do. I mean, since I've been on council and learned how much the city has stepped up its activity around this dramatically and has a number of running programs and outreach to new businesses and a website and everything else. I just don't know what is it that, that we would be asking staff as a council to do specifically? That they are doing.
Yeah, that's not our, that's not already being done.
In two years, you'll have a status update that says ongoing and will list the programs that are ongoing. So whether that's effective to the council is the question. The work is underway either way and the division is established. I think that's the unique difference. There weren't staff assigned full-time to this field for 20 some odd years in my experience. Now there are and that work is progressing incredibly well. And you also receive a report at least annually by the lead staff person. So I'm not quite sure what else we would accomplish in that goal.
Okay.
Okay, so let's, uh, leave it below the water line?
And then the last one is kind of a tax measure going forward. Consider a ballot measure to support programs impacted by the end of the ARPA funds and basing it on current and future needs. We haven't really talked about how we're going to move that forward. And I guess that actually comes under finances. Well, maybe not, maybe under our community.
It's more engaged diverse community.
Yeah, but it, but I think it might be worth calling it out. You're, I think you're right, it can fit in the.
So if it's better under goal four?
Uh, yeah, I think so, because I mean, I think most of what ARPA is funding.
Right.
So thoughts, council, about including that as an objective under goal four?
It will be brought to you already proactively through objective one under goal five, because that is something that the council expressed as a continued interest. So when you have your revenue measures discussion, this will be one of the many buckets that we're bringing forward as we listen to the ongoing dialogue and concerns by the council. If you'd like to express it specifically, of course, by all means, I just wanted to add that tidbit.
Yeah, I mean, because I see it as, as potentially different than just support for the general fund. I mean, I think it's, it's more targeted. It could be via revenue two from the general fund, but it could also be by some specific funding stream that's, that's targeted to keeping those programs going.
Okay, other thoughts about including, including it?
I mean, I would say, might be, you know, consider if, if and how to continue each of the ARPA funded programs.
Nicole was, uh, city manager was saying that that's already like, there's more, there's that and more that is coming. Am I hearing that correct?
But I don't know that we would necessarily consider, we don't have to go to continue, we don't have to consider continuing those programs. We're figuring out how to continue them. We're under no legal obligation to do so. So most cities otherwise would, you know, just let it sunset, it's done.
No, but I'm sorry, could you repeat what you?
Happy to, and happy to add a little bit more detail. As we begin to sunset ARPA programs and the funding is no longer available, there will be conversations and discussions as we mold whatever fiscal year budget that is to determine how much money we have in the general fund, because that's what would support the programs if we don't have the ARPA funding. And two, what are the priorities based on the needs analysis and utility of those programs to date? Meaning what is most important to community members and what has been the most readily used? So we have more analysis to do there. But again, it's fine if you'd like it as a goal because it will be coming to you because there will be decisions to make on how our small city with limited revenue moves forward with that unless we have another funding source. So I, I don't have the exact language, but it's fine if you'd like to include it. You may, it may be helpful to repeat it.
Consider a ballot measure to support programs impacted by the end of the ARPA funds based on current and future needs.
And I would probably give a like, a friendly suggestion that it evolved more to what council member Jordan had indicated, where we're doing some decision making for that.
Or consider if and how.
Yep.
Continue each ARPA funded program.
And that would fit under, again, under goal four?
Yeah.
Your connectivity. Okay, thoughts about that? This will be our hopefully our last decision of the evening?
Yeah, given the political, national politics, um, so there is definitely ARPA programs. Uh, I am unsure of what other federally funded programs we might have that, you know, it could simply say ARPA and other federally funded programs. Just broaden it. I think we would do it anyways, again, as, as the city manager said, but we don't know what other programs we might be, have less money.
Well, I think it should be not federally funded, just funded, because it, you know, there's that domino effect. I think you're right, but I think it should be broader. Broader than your broader.
So John, you're okay? Council member Mickey?
I, I'm, I'm okay with your original language. I assume staff will bring it back, bring things to us anyways. Or, or as, 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 uh, council member, sorry, Vice Mayor McQuade said, uh, broader language. I'm not sure what we would say though, if it wasn't federally funded.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't broaden it because the ARPA funding by design was diluted anyway. We knew it was going to have an end and the programs it funds are kind of specific to goal four. Whereas federal funding, that could be anything and everything. I would imagine if those, if something happens there, I don't know what our exposure is other than we've already experienced the last council meeting. But if something comes up, staff is going to bring it to us anyway.
Uh, included?
No.
Okay. Council member Hanson Romero?
Sign to end us.
Mayor Lopez, thoughts?
Sorry to leave off my amendment or leave, yeah, yeah, okay, good, just checking.
Got it.
Got it?
Okay.
Okay, very good. This is not the final final statement, right? Because, uh, staff will take all of the feedback today and all the input and then do a little refining with the department and bring it back to the. Ann's going to get mad at me because I'm not in front of the microphone. Okay. I think that pretty much wraps up our, uh, task tonight. I think we accomplished everything. Is there anything else before we adjourn? Everybody okay?
Just want to thank the council for your endurance this evening. This one certainly took a little longer than last time, but I think it was a very thoughtful conversation. So Sean, thank you as well for your facilitation and appreciate your travels back home in advance.
Yes, thank you and thank you staff for everything that you guys do.
I have a process question. It looks like there's people in the audience, do they have an opportunity now to say something? And I could be wrong, but are there? Thank you.
All right, well, that closes out our item and I will formally adjourn this meeting.